The following is the procedure for public comment and participation. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi judicial public hearings must complete a sign up card and sign the oath. Sign up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address the pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on agenda items. Next, citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. And finally, all sign up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
The purpose of the city council meeting is to discuss city business and proper decorum must be displayed by all in attendance. Public input and participation is encouraged. However, all persons in attendance shall comply with the rules for meeting procedures and shall refrain from any action that disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meeting or hinders a council from performing its duties. No person shall interfere with the rights of others to speak, hear, see, or attend the proceedings, make threats of violence, disrupt the proceedings with shouting, fail to confine remarks to the agenda item under consideration, nor continue to speak after the allotted speaking time has expired as these actions shall be considered disruptive and disorderly. The mayor shall caution any person who violates these provisions and disrupts the orderly proceedings of the council meetings and they shall be directed to comply. Any person who fails to comply as cautioned shall be ruled out of order, shall forfeit the remainder of their speaking time on the agenda item under consideration and will be requested to return to their seat. Persons who fail to comply as directed shall be subject to removal from the council chambers by law enforcement or such other actions as may be reasonably necessary to enforce these regulations. Notwithstanding, the mayor may order the immediate removal of any person from the chambers who possesses a threat to property or life safety. Nothing in this section shall be construed to limit or restrict a person's right created by the constitution, law, ordinance, or regulation.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Titusville City Council regularly scheduled meeting September 23rd, 2025 at 6:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order and I would like to invite up Pastor Gerald Smith, retired chaplain from Parish Medical Center, who will give the invocation.
Thank you very much. Let's all pray. Loving God, we thank you for the opportunity to gather. Good government is a blessing. We pray, Lord, that during this meeting tonight you would grant wisdom to the mayor and the council members. We pray you would bless this city. We thank you, Lord, for your word which gives us good guidance about living a community and says to us that if it is possible, as much as it depends on you, live at peace with everyone. God, it depends on each one of us to live at peace with one another. May your spirit guide us and bless us so that our community is blessed. We thank you, Lord, that those who are here, perhaps there are some here who have some legitimate grievance here tonight. This is a good forum for that. We pray, Lord, that your spirit and presence would preside over even that and we pray, God, that it would be a peaceful exchange, that this room would be characterized by listening and honoring of one another. Bless the further proceedings of this meeting tonight, we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, Pastor. Can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Now, if I could ask council for a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of the meeting on July 22nd, August 26th, and the special city council meeting on November 11th.
Second.
Would you accept a friendly amendment to your motion of special city council meeting on September 11th?
Oh, yeah.
Second still stands. Alright, second still stands. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Mr. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of council. First item on the agenda is five As, Special Recognitions and Presentations, and we have Employee of the Month for September of 2025. We have, we'll be recognizing three hardworking members of Public Works who were working recently on the recommissioning of the Public Works Admin Building and to, they were nominated by IT and Justin Wells will present the award.
Good evening, council. I want to give a little context for my nomination. IT works very closely with the Facilities Department. They do a lot of the dirty work, not just for, for our department, but for Public Works and a lot of other departments of the city as well. And they make us, in a lot of cases, look good and get, help us get very important things done. And in this instance, I nominated Rob Dos, Brad Robinson, and James Hardy, but I also want to recognize Patrick Fields, Malik Richardson, Ryan Mail, and Billy Hughes. They're all a hardworking group and they all deserve credit, but in this instance, we can only, we wanted to keep it lean, so we, we focused on Rob and Brad and James because recently we reacquired the chamber, what was the Chamber Building at 2000 South Washington Avenue and we had to get internet to that building and Rob and his crew were a big part of that. And I'm going to go ahead and read the entire nomination now. I want to nominate Rob Dos in the Facilities Group for all the hard work they do around the city. They're a versatile crew, can handle everything from streetlight maintenance to traffic signal programming and troubleshooting to other various projects such as ethernet cable runs. They bust their tails and they do so without fanfare. Specifically, I want to highlight a recent project which we coordinated, the IT department, with, with the, with the Facilities Group, and that was to get internet to the new Public Works Administration Building at 2000 South Washington Avenue. While we could have went with a dedicated fiber run to the building at the cost several hundred dollars a month, we elected instead to do a point to point connection, which basically is a mast on top of the roof. It's a, looks like a little satellite dish and it pushes ethernet signal to that building. And in doing so, we were able to do that at a cost savings to the city and without Rob and his group, we couldn't have done that. Because of unforeseen, excuse me, because of unforeseen obstacles, we had to make several readjustments to our plan and we ultimately had to erect a 30-foot mast on top of City Hall and we also had to do something similar out in front of the public, new Public Works Building. This was all done in the middle of summer and we all had to work outside and those guys, especially in 90-plus degree heat for several days. We could have not made this project happen without their assistance and for this reason, I believe Rob and Brad and James deserved to be recognized as co-employees of the month for the City of Titusville for September. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Justin, and I completely agree. Our Facilities Team are unmatched and again, to Justin's point, they do the dirty work without the fanfare and I think it'd be appropriate for all of us as council to present this award to them, so thank you very much for nominating them. City Manager.
Yes, sir. Next item is impervious lot coverage and presentation. As you recall, back in April, city council expressed concern over the way that residents could measure the impervious lot restrict, coverage restrictions on their single family homes and staff took it upon themselves to develop an interactive tool that would allow citizens to determine what type of structures they could place on their, their property. And here to do a demonstration of that tool is Brad Parrish.
Mr. Parrish.
Thank you. This will be real short. Again, as last year, as requested by council, you asked us for us to come up with something for, to allow property owners to find out information on their property as far as what would be more restrictive than what they typically might find. And City of Titusville is unique in having a area critical concern regulation to regulate the areas where you can put impervious surfaces on properties where we draw our water. We decided the best alternative was to just add to the list of maps that we currently have on the city's webpage and if you recall, in the past, we created several of these maps like zoning and developments of applications and the statuses of those and everything else, kinds of other information we created, story maps. So we're going to add to this, this particular map that I'm going to show you is not published, it's draft. I'm just going to show you basically what it does and what it allows people to find out about their properties. This, during this, through this research, we found that there really aren't a whole lot of properties affected by this and this is strictly only single family lots. That was the question that was brought up to us. So we only looked at single family lots and if you recall, there are two main areas of the city that have, that are regulated by the area critical concern ordinance. This is one particular area, it's a large swath of the city, it's the north part of the city and it has several subdivisions that were approved since 1986. That's the original year of the ordinance that are impacted by this particular regulation. So a lot of the subdivisions that were approved prior to that date are not affected by the ordinance. So there are several new ones since 1986 and especially since 2005 when there was a major amendment to that that included well field regulations which are even more stringent that affected some of the newer subdivisions. So just to demonstrate what someone can find out on a piece of property, you can zoom in on it or add your address in there and you should have, be able to find out a lot of information about that particular property. I'm just going to bring up one that's, that's vacant right now in one particular subdivision just to demonstrate exactly what you can find. And so when this is made available to the public, they'll be able to see what their maximum impervious coverage is on their property. In other words, how much impervious surface as far as building, even asphalt, driveways, sidewalk, all of that is what's calculated in this particular regulation. So without all training, actually, questions you have, it's just some general information. We'll add it to the rest of the maps that we have.
Member Stokel.
Yes. To clarify, is this only for the lots that are in the area of critical concern?
I should, yeah, I'm sorry. There were a few subdivisions that were approved through our regular plan development process, planned unit development process that are located outside of the areas of critical concern and in those particular developments, the developer chose to impose a maximum impervious on certain lots. So those are also included in this map.
If I remember right, this was brought up when we found out that somebody couldn't build a pool.
Correct.
Okay, and so this will tell them that whether or not they can or can't build a pool or will it just give them stats and numbers?
It'll give them the stats, the maximum square feet allowed that can be covered by impervious.
And then they should be able to know how much is already, okay. Alright, thank you.
Counsel. Seeing none, thank you very much, Mr. Parrish. City Manager.
Moving on to boards and commissions, six A is the Code Enforcement Special Magistrate and that's a semi-annual written report included in your agenda packet and no action is required.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Counsel, do you have any questions? Seeing none, City Manager.
Moving on to six B is the Community Redevelopment Agency and the recommended action is to appoint one member at large to the Community Redevelopment Agency for a four-year term to expire on September 30th, 2029. And Mr. James Mutter has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board for a four year term to expire on September 30th, 2029 and there are currently no other applicants on file.
Thank you very much, City Manager. City Clerk, are there any cards on file?
One card, Stan Johnston.
My name is Stan Johnston and I've sent you an email about some problems that we're having and it's pretty serious, I sent it to you today. And it also involves the community, the CRA Agency and those people who are members of the CRA. And right here, we have five members of the CRA. Four out of five of them, I can't, I can't say very much good about what's going on in regards to the subject of what's going on in the CRA and that is sewage, sewage spray. I have this.
Mr. Johnson, I'm cautioning you to stay on topic of whether we should appoint or not appoint a member to the CRA Board.
Well, we should appoint one, but they should understand right now is, is the city has been, the CRA and the council members are in big trouble and I'm reporting you to the FBI regarding dishonesty, dysfunctional government. In this case, four or five of you are members of the CRA. It's a big deal. And what, what the city has done is they, four or five of you members here, right here of the CRA have approved the spraying of, the public with sewage.
Alright, Mr. Johnson, please have a seat. You're not on topic and I already cautioned you.
This person is going to join the CRA.
Have a seat. Thank you.
Okay, please, Wanda, please.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Note, note that I'm sitting down under duress, please. Thank you.
Duly noted. Would the applicant like to come up and say something? City Council. Member Nelson.
I think I've known Jimmy for a long time. Of course, I've known his father and his mother and I think you do an excellent job. And normally, when we only have one applicant, we hold off, but I think in this case, I'd like to proceed. That can be a motion.
Second.
Alright, I have a motion by Member Nelson, second by Vice Mayor Cole. Is there any further council discussion? Alright, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much and congratulations. Appreciate you serving our community. City Manager.
Yes, sir. The next item is six C, the North Brevard County Hospital District Board and the North Brevard County Hospital District Board Semi-A annual report will be presented and Mr. Stan Retsch will be doing the presentation.
Stan, are these your glasses? Good evening, Honorable Mayor Connors and members of city council. I am Stan Retsch, the Vice Chairman of the Parish Medical Center Board of Directors. It is my honor to present the Parish Medical Center Semi-A annual report for 2025. As part of our enabling legislation, Parish Medical Center serves as a special district of the state of Florida. Twice a year, we come before city council to report on how we are fulfilling our mission to serve this community. A written report has been provided to all members of council and includes some additional information. My presentation this evening will highlight just a few of the many exciting milestones achieved within parish healthcare since our last update in February. To begin, Parish Medical Center was proudly recognized by the City of Titusville as a 2025 Sustainability Leader in recognition of our outstanding dedication and demonstrated efforts in alignment with the Titusville Sustainability Action Plan. The award was presented during the city's first Sustainability Leadership Awards Program in April. Parish Medical Center shares a deep respect for our community and the beautiful environment that surrounds us on the Florida Space Coast. We are proud to continue engaging in sustainability initiatives that help shape a healthier future for all of Titusville and beyond. We are equally proud of the ways that we recognize and support our care partners, a term used within parish healthcare to describe all of our employees, providers, and volunteers. The Daisy Award is an international recognition program embraced by more than 6,000 healthcare facilities across 39 countries. It honors the exceptional and compassionate care nurses provide every day. Parish Healthcare first partnered with the Daisy Foundation in January of 2025, opening nominations from patients, families, and coworkers. Since then, we've received more than 150 nominations. On May 8th, during National Nurses Week, Parish Medical Center's Chief Nursing Officer, Lisa Deckerson, presented our inaugural Daisy Award during a celebration in our hospital's atrium. Our first honoree was the perioperative services nurse, Melissa Hamlin, who has served our hospital for more than 10 years. The celebration was made even more special with the heartfelt remarks from County Commissioner Katie Delaney and Mayor Andrew Connors, who also presented us with an official proclamation in honor of National Nurses Week. We appreciate both leaders for attending and expressing their deep gratitude and admiration for the exceptional and extraordinary compassion and dedication demonstrated by our nurses. In addition to recognizing our nurses, we also celebrate our physicians. Our hematologist and oncologist, Dr., I'm going to get it wrong, Marlini Cruz Amy, Dr. Cruz Amy, we'll do that, was named a finalist in the Weventures Annual Women Who Rock Awards in the Excellence of Caregiving category. This award honors trailblazing women who are making a meaningful difference in the area of women's health, women's rights, and women in music. We are proud to stand alongside her as her leadership and compassion were recognized on a larger scale, larger stage. In March, Parish Medical Center became the first hospital in Brevard County to introduce pulsed field ablation, a groundbreaking treatment for atrial fibrillation, also known as AFib. Championed by doctor, or cardiologist and electrophysiologist, Dr. AJ, this event, innovative procedure was performed in our state-of-the-art cardiac electrophysiology lab. To date, our team has successfully completed 78 procedures, keeping parish medical, excuse me, parish healthcare at the forefront of cardiac care. Not all of our proudest moments involve technology or awards. Sometimes they're found in a simple, human act of compassion. Last month, our team helped fulfill the heartfelt wishes of James, a patient bravely battling stage four colon cancer, who shared that he wanted to marry his longtime partner, Melissa, with, he shared that with his care team. Within one week, our chapel became a wedding venue, our nurses break room transported into reception hall, and love filled every corner of our hospital. Staff and community partners came together to provide the couple with the details, with all the details for their special day, including flowers, photography, wedding officiant, custom wedding cake, an intimate wedding reception, and more. As the newlybuds exited the chapel, more than 100 care partners lined the hospital for a celebratory clapout. This celebration was more than a wedding, it was a reminder that healing takes many forms and that compassion, community, and humanity are at the heart of everything that we do. Parish healthcare continues to grow, welcoming new providers to meet the needs of our, north of our community. Please allow me to introduce you to three of our newest providers. Dr. Mark Swirzerski, got it? Alright. I've been practicing. Dr. Mark is a board certified urologist with more than 37 years of urological care experience. Rebecca Forbes, an advanced practice registered nurse specializing in geriatric medicine. Harmen. And lastly, Johari Phazen, a board certified psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner. I couldn't let it go. Beyond clinical care, we extend our mission into the community through outreach, sponsorships, and donations. This summer, we completed 260 youth sports physicals to support health and safety of young athletes in our north of our community. In partnership with Who We Play For, a total of 191 electrocardiogram screenings were also completed. The $10 fee per student supported the Just Parish Medical Foundation, sustaining athletic training services and providing future scholarships for high school students pursuing fields in healthcare. In May, we donated an automated, an automated external defibrillator, or an AED, to Life Point In May, we donated an automated external defibrillator, or an AED, to LifePoint Ministries. Our nursing education team also provided hands-on training to ensure their leadership could respond confidently in the event of a cardiac emergency. At the United Way Space Coast Annual Award Ceremony, Parish Healthcare was honored as a Top 25 Most Generous Contributor for 2024. Together, our care partners raised more than $41,000 for the campaign continuing our longstanding partnership with United Way. Through our annual employee giving program called Circle of Giving, our care partners raised $65,000, surpassing our goal by $10,000. This year's Wizard of Oz-inspired campaign was called "There's No Place Like Parish." These funds support programs throughout the Just Parish Medical Foundation. In partnership with the Titusville Chamber of Commerce, we served as the presenting sponsor for this year's Write It Down Community Bike Ride. Celebrating its sixth year, the event had more than 300 cyclists attend. Not only did we serve as the presenting sponsor, but we also had a visible presence at the bike ride with an interactive booth and representatives from our Health and Wellness Center. Our cardiologist, Dr. Andre Gabriel, was also in attendance to speak with the community regarding heart health. We are also proud to once again serve as the presenting sponsor for the City of Titusville's Red, White, and Boom Fourth of July Celebration at Sandpoint Park. As the chamber sponsor for the, as a champion sponsor for the Economic Outlook Brunch hosted by the Titusville Chamber, we support a local panel of leaders, experts, and community visionaries from across the space industry. At the Economic Development Council's annual meeting, Parish Healthcare proudly served as the exclusive hospitality sponsor, with Board Chairman Robert Jordan providing opening remarks. This year, we sponsored project graduation for all three local North Brevard high schools, including Titusville Astronaut and Space Coast Junior-Senior High. Care partners from our labor and delivery team joined North Brevard's Greatest Baby Shower, where our midwife, Jew the Cyron, served as guest speaker for several of their informational sessions for expecting parents. Just as our commitment to continue, to care, contend, excuse me, just as our commitment to care extends beyond medicine, it also extends beyond our walls. Parish Healthcare is proud to give back in the following ways to further support our community. In partnership with the Space Coast Health Centers, LifePoint Ministries, and Under the Bridge Ministries, we hosted our second annual Hopeful Heart Supply Drive to collect items for individuals experiencing homelessness. Through the generosity and compassion of our community and care partners, more than 1,400 essential items were collected and donated, helping to provide relief and protection from Florida's hottest seasons. When the Port St. John Library needed a large screen television for their program, community programming, Parish Healthcare proudly donated a 98-inch television, helping expand their offerings for residents. This year, we launched our first Healing Classrooms: Inspiring Futures giveaway to support North Brevard teachers. We received more than 130 applications and were able to provide back-to-school supplies to 30 local educators. And lastly, this summer, we celebrated the grand opening of Parish Healthcare Center in North Titusville with a ribbon-cutting ceremony in partnership with the Titusville Chamber of Commerce. The ceremony was open to the public and included remarks from Parish Healthcare leadership, Board Chairman Robert Jordan, Mayor Andrew Connors, Commissioner Katie Delaney, State Representative Chase Tremont, as well as self-guided tours of the new facility and the opportunity to meet providers at the new location, including medical hematologist, oncologist, Dr. Cruz-Amy, and board-certified surgeon, Dr. Al Peccarero. To share more, I'd like to invite Matt Graebel, Assistant Vice President of Operations, to the podium. I told him I was gonna take the book, make him mad, but I'm not.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Retsch. Imagine hearing the words, "You have cancer." Few moments are more frightening. A cancer diagnosis immediately sends the minds and hearts of patients and families reeling. It's a confusing and overwhelming time. Questions swirl around prognosis, treatment, and countless additional concerns. Where do I go? What comes next? Today, the answer is clear. Parish Healthcare in North Titusville. In June, we opened the doors to our newest facility, offering a comprehensive accredited cancer program. Since 1989, our oncology program has been accredited by the American College of Surgeons Commission on Cancer, one of only a few in Brevard County. Our cancer program includes medical oncology, surgery, diagnostic imaging, pathology, nurses, social workers, pharmacists, dieticians, cancer care navigators, and more, all working together to provide patient- and family-centered care. We also offer advanced surgical techniques, sophisticated diagnostic testing, chemotherapy, immune therapy, early detection screening, support groups, palliative care, end-of-life care, an education and community resource center, American Cancer Society programs, as well as a one-of-a-kind cancer boutique. At our ribbon-cutting ceremony, one of the most powerful moments came when Ms. Wanda, a lifelong Titusville resident, shared her personal cancer journey. Ms. Wanda was first diagnosed with breast cancer in the 1990s, and again at the end of 2023. With her most recent diagnosis, she had been receiving treatment through Parish Healthcare's oncology program. As she described, when she was first diagnosed with cancer, she never imagined she'd be standing here today. Parish Healthcare Center isn't just a building. It's a symbol of courage, compassion, and possibility for those battling cancer. Cancer changes everything. It challenges your body, your mind, and your spirit. But it also reveals how resilient we are and how powerful support can be. Our new location represents healing, not just through medicine, but through kindness and human connection. Every time Ms. Wanda visits, our staff provides more than just care. They provide hope. To anyone walking through those doors for the first time, unsure or afraid, Wanda's been there. It's a place of strength, support, and second chances, and a reminder that you're not alone. On August 7th, Wanda became the very first patient to complete her cancer treatment at our new center, a milestone that symbolizes hope and healing. From cancer prevention to diagnosis, treatment, and recovery, we can provide an integrated system of care, which features technologically advanced healing environment and a world-class team of experts. The center continues to grow and add new experts from various disciplines to the team. Families also benefit from coordinated care and seamless transitions between the care settings. Looking ahead, we are working with our care navigation and dietary teams to launch outpatient nutritional services tailored specifically to cancer patients, ensuring comprehensive care during treatment. We recently partnered with Infigo Clinical Research, located in Sanford, Florida. They're a multi-therapeutic network of physicians whose mission is to bring cutting-edge treatments to local communities through clinical trials. Their team is dedicated to advancing medical research and providing access to innovative healthcare solutions. And we anticipate offering these opportunities by the end of 2025. Soon, we will begin treating a wide range of cancers and benign conditions that respond to radiation therapy. We will take our patients throughout the entire process, from diagnosis through treatment to follow-up, which includes breast cancer, central nervous system cancers, gastrointestinal cancers, genitourinary cancers, gynecologic, head and neck, lung, lymphoma, leukemia, skin, soft tissue and bone, thyroid, metastatic, and many other benign conditions. Displayed here is an image-guided radiation therapy machine. Before treatment, it takes detailed scans of the patient's body using a 360-degree rotation. The full rotation allows it to capture multiple angles of a tumor and the surrounding anatomy. This image helps guide the radiation beams so they can be delivered with pinpoint accuracy from different directions while minimizing exposure to healthy tissue. This ensures that our patients receive the most precise and effective treatment possible. Thank you for allowing me to share some additional information on our newest location. I'll now turn the presentation back over to Mr. Retsch.
Thank you again, Matt. This concludes our Semiannual Report on behalf of Parish Healthcare. Mayor Connors and Members of City Council, thank you for your continued support. Together, we are building a healthier, stronger Titusville. We'll now welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Retsch, Mr. Graebel, for the presentation. Vice Mayor Cole?
I would be remiss if I didn't say how proud I am to be and have been a member of the Parish Medical Center Board for the last 25 years. As Vice Mayor of the City of Titusville, I want to say how proud we are to have this facility in North Brevard. And it's just, I'm always amazed every time I go to a board meeting with the innovation that we have come up with, and it's through the leadership of Dr. McCarterian that this has happened. I say I've been on the board for 25 years. George has been the CEO for 24, of those 25 years. And it's just a pleasure being there and seeing the things that we do in our community, even having a wedding for someone who otherwise would probably not have a wedding. And the philanthropic thoughts and the things that Parish does in our community, a lot of people are really not aware of. So I say to the staff, thank you so very much for what you do for our community.
Well said.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Cole. Member Nelson?
I just want to say I agree with Herman, but when I got to the wedding part, there was, I was stiffened. I mean, that was just special. So, thank you.
Seeing nobody else from Council, I too would like to reiterate those sentiments. I can tell you, my wife was at that wedding, and the report I got back was there wasn't a dry eye in the place.
I'm sure.
So, thank you for all that you do, and we appreciate you coming before us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all.
City Manager?
Moving on to Item D is the Titusville Environmental Commission. And the recommended action is to accept the resignation of Titusville Environmental Commission Alternate Member Joshua Coase with an unexpired term that will expire on November 30th, 2026. Appoint one alternate member with an unexpired term that will expire on November 30th, 2026. Additionally, appoint one regular member with an unexpired term to expire on November 30th, 2027. As far as candidates, we have Jason Miller, Nathan Rothel, and Stan Johnson have expressed their willingness and desire to serve on this board as regular or alternative alternate member. In addition, Kevin Rosa, who is currently serving on the North Brevard Commission on Parks and Recreation as a city appointee, wishes to serve on both boards. He has expressed his willingness and desire to serve on this board as a regular or alternate member.
Thank you very much, City Manager. City Clerk, how many cards do we have on this item? Five. Of the five, how many are applicants?
One.
One is an applicant?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, we'll get right to the cards.
Kevin Rosa?
Kevin Rosa, Hardy Street, Titusville. Good evening, Council. Many people know that I'm in the river every other day or more. I'm into only wind sports, windsurfing, kite surfing, hydrofoiling. I'm in it, on it, under it. I'm immersed in the water. You could say I'm baptized in it just about daily. I recently explained why some people think that per capita Titusville is a poor city, and now others think the water's dirty. We can't be both. I would like to do everything in my power to end the reputation of having dirty water. I'd like to relay an all-too-common scenario that happened to me this past Friday. I was windsurfing at Parish Park. As I got into the water, a lady yelled from her car window, "Isn't that water dirty?" Didn't even get out of the car. The waters, I've been in the water at its worst. I unknowingly kite-surfed right through the big spill from the Sandpoint Forest main. Then I knowingly windsurfed it, windsurfing it the next day and the following days. I'm fine. Tony Shifalo says I've probably built up an immunity to it, and I think she might be right. The water is getting cleaner. I see herds of manatee, lots of seagrass. Let's keep the water quality moving in the right direction. Nothing will stop me, nothing will keep me out of the water. However, I want it cleaner for the locals, the tourists, the wildlife, and for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosa. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Next card is Kay St. Ange.
Kay St. Ange, Titusville Tree Team, Maryland Avenue. I wish to recommend to you the appointment of Kevin Rosa to TEC. Kevin Rosa moved to Titusville to windsurf on the Indian River Lagoon. While boating on the lagoon, he developed a deep attachment to its waters, inspiring a passion to keep these waters as clean as possible. Kevin is currently employed full-time by Keep Brevard Beautiful, doing the hard work of removing invasive species along the causeways and picking up trash along the causeways that might otherwise end up in the lagoon. Kevin volunteers with Titusville Tree Team to plant trees in parks and keep them watered until established. Kevin is a member of the North Brevard Parks and Recreation Commission. Kevin has made several good recommendations to Parks and Recreation, including a launch for non-motorized boats at Sandpoint Park, speed bumps at Parish Park, and removal of invasive species at Sherwood Park. Being on the Parks and Rec Commission, Kevin would bring insight to TEC on the Urban Forest Management Plan's goal of creating a roadmap to enhance and preserve the community forests, including planting plan strategies in city parks and publicly owned land. If appointed by Council, Kevin would bring his expertise and passion to the lagoon and to our parks and to our trees, to the TEC. Please consider appointing Kevin Rosa to the TEC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kay. City Clerk?
Tony Shifalo.
Good evening, Shifalo, Tropic Street. You know I'm a cheerleader for your citizen advisory boards, and I even sometimes cheer some of staff's suggestions. So I regularly attend the various boards as issues come before them concerning my community, Canaveral Heights, you know, the one west of the tracks in the poor section of town where the historic Norwood House is located. So when I stand before you, you know it is an important issue that brings me here as a community member. I wanted to stand to speak for James Mutter. He left already. That was a good appointment. Good choice. Thank you. But I don't want to mimic our town crier, Mr. Johnston, by turning in too many cards to speak. So I'm gonna put in a good word for Mr. Mutter now. He's a great asset to our community, and he's appeared before the Historic Board several times while he was thoughtfully rebuilding that beautiful building on the corner of our downtown historic district. But about the appointment to the TEC, I have a recommendation. Please consider Jason Miller as your Please consider Jason Miller as your first choice appointee to a regular position on the Environmental Commission. And as an alternate, Kevin Rosa, Rosen, who should attend the meetings as a liaison with the Parks and Rec Department, as Ms. Kay pointed out. Now, the entertainer in me wants to introduce Stan Johnston as a preferable candidate, if only to put to rest some of his issues, because then he'd be in a position to really find out what's going on. But I considered Miller's qualifications and was most impressed with his background in environmental science, his Brevard Eels work, the volunteer work at the Wildlife Refuge. He's even in the Rotary Club. So while there is one other candidate, the TEC was his third choice. And I highly recommend he apply now for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, his first choice, because there is an opening, I've heard. So please, appoint Mr. Miller to the TEC and Mr. Rosen as the alternate so he can do both Parks and Rec and the TEC. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Toni. City Clerk?
Tom Abbott.
Good evening. So I met Kevin about eight years ago windsurfing here in Titusville. And we found we have a lot of common interests. Besides water sports, we both were prior arborists in our preceding jobs. Kevin was more on the ground doing tree preservation and some removal I did at part-time as my job as a state land forester. We both also have a love for the environment, especially the Indian River Lagoon. As a windsurfer, you spend a lot of time waiting for the wind. Even if you believe the forecast, it never comes out the way you think it was going to be. So you get there and you realize there's no wind. So you end up talking to people. And I got to talking to Kevin as most people, all they want to do is talk about windsurfing and kite surfing, et cetera. Kevin, it seems like we always got involved with environmental topics such as smart growth or effects of stormwater drainage on the Indian River Lagoon, or even the need for infrastructure to keep up with proposed development or ongoing development. Also, when the winds were light, sometimes I'd drive by and there'd be Kevin picking up litter. He'd be in the lagoon picking up rebar, concrete blocks out of there, getting rid of it to make it safe for everyone. And then he'd be, seems to be, taking photos of everything from fish kills, dumping violations, tire ruts made by trucks on the shoreline, pictures of horseshoe crabs, which he, I guess he said he shares with the Fish and Wildlife Biologists and other activists concerned with horseshoe populations. As you know, he's environmentally active being on the Parks and Rec. But he's also, during the review and the proposal of the current Parrish Park, he formed an organization called Nemo. And that was to let people know what's going on with the review process and the approval process. And in case anybody had some environmental concerns or myself, as a windsurfer, make sure there is, there'd be access to the shoreline to launch my windsurfer. He also civic-minded. He volunteers to teach the University of Central Florida Sailing Club how to windsurf. He's doing that for free. And he was able to do that by acquiring the necessary equipment by reaching out to the windsurf community and getting donations. And I thought that was pretty smart of him. So as a prior member of a conservation commission myself, I think he'd be a great asset to Titusville's Environmental Commission. He's high-energy, great organizer, civic-minded, and open up to new ideas.
Thank you very much, sir. City Clerk?
Yes, sir. Stephen Scott.
Hello, Stephen Scott, I'm working in Dallas Pine. I also wanted to nominate Kevin Rosa for this position also. I'm a sailor, so that's where we met, being in the river and kayaking and doing kayak tours for a little while as well. I get, you know, get the, you get into the river and you see how it is. And I've seen a lot of improvement this year. But I'd like to see that continue. And somebody that's actively doing his part and caring about the environment is somebody that I'd like to see in that position. Everybody else has said plenty of things that I can back up on. But I just wanted to see Titusville known for the clean water also. So he's a passionate person, very thorough, as you guys can probably see. And being on those two positions, I think it would be very good for the town. But I don't need to, we've had so many speakers, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. City Clerk?
Yes, we have two more cards we received after you asked for that count. Jason Miller?
By the way, if you were an applicant and you didn't put a card in, I was going to call you after all the cards were called, but I appreciate it.
I wasn't sure. I figured I'd throw it in there just in case. So thank you all for considering my application and thank the lovely lady that gave me an endorsement there. I didn't know that was a thing. But as my case said, I did major in environmental science and I did do that degree later in life. I didn't graduate until 2019. Did that during my time in the Coast Guard. And when I retired from the Coast Guard a few years ago, we could have moved anywhere we wanted to, but we chose to come back here to Titusville, largely because of the lagoon and because of the waters around this area and just all the, all the beautiful natural spaces we have. I am on the Brevard County Environmental Danger Lands Selection Management Committee as well. And so I really am trying to involve myself more and more in these citizen groups. After a really bad mountain bike crash last year, it's become really hard for me to work a regular job. And so I've decided instead to just squeeze things a little tight, work off my retirement and do more of these volunteer things. So Titusville is my home. I chose to come here. I have a lot of different options. And my hope is to help make it so that my kids want to stay here when, when they grow up. So I go out on the river and the river, my boys all the time. And it's just, it's a great place to be. I love it. So being on this commission would mean a lot to me. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jason. City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston here. I took some lessons in kite surfing and from, what's his name over here? Kevin, Kevin Rosa. And it turns out that I'm a horrible kite, kite surfer. But I did do some windsurfing. But anyhow, he's a, he's a good man also. If you notice, I've got six signs here. They all have to do with the issues of the Titusville Environmental Commission. And it's pretty serious, serious stuff that's going there. In fact, this council has disputed the TEC on a number of occasions. And you know, the TEC has done some things. And just recently is that I sent an email, actually also even today, but on September the 2nd, I sent an email to Mr. Connors. And I'll read a little bit to you.
Mr. Johnson, I would use this time to highlight why you're a good candidate to be on the TEC.
Say it again?
You need to use this time to talk about why you're a good candidate to be appointed to the TEC. That is what we're doing right now.
Okay, I'm a good candidate for that. And I'm working for it because I'm a professional engineer and I have some rules to follow to protect the health public, health, safety and welfare of the public, which the council is failing to do and which you have been reminded by the TEC and which I remind you again by saying is that I pray for God's discipline to awaken you to your evil and shortage of humility and for you to do God's will on this matter. Not evil works of spraying people with sewage. You're neither a good Samaritan nor, nor a good shepherd, nor our neighbor, that's Luke 10, when you promote evil as acceptable or okay. You and others have successfully scammed the public as con artists and shysters to deliberately trick and harm innocent people. Amen. A sign that love never fails. So we're still in this situation where there's a conflict. Hang on. There's a conflict that, and also I sent you an email today, dated September 23rd, about the, about the same issue that the city is doing is that, and that I've contacted a number of people, including Will Scheiner, our state attorney, our city ma- and also the governor and also the FBI about crimes that this city is committing against our, against our environment. So I'm, I'm a candidate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk? All right. City Council, Member Nelson?
I'd like to start with the resignation of Joshua Cos- Cozy.
Member Nelson, may I interrupt? I apologize. Mr. Nathaniel, would you like to come up and say something? I'm sorry, I did make that announcement that I was going to call on applicants if they had not put a card in, so I apologize.
Thank you, guys. Nathan Rothel, Emory Rothel, really. From here, been here all my life, both my wife and I. Retired, live on the river. I'm in the river, oh, move closer. But I just want to say, I put my name in for every now and then for different things on the boards. So I just want to make sure we're being represented. And this is actually the first time I've come to a council meeting. And I don't know these gentlemen here, but my goodness, you have some really good people to choose from. I would always like to be considered wherever I can help. And I don't remember the names. I think it was like Jason Miller and Mr. Rosa, fantastic. My goodness, what qualified people we have wanting to step up. So I always want to be considered wherever I can help. I don't believe I have near the qualifications of those two guys that I just heard with what, all they've done. But when the time comes, hopefully I'll be ready to help a little bit more. Just a guy that lives on the river. So, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. All right. Sorry for interrupting you, Member Nelson.
So I was going to say, I'd move to accept the resignation, Mr. Cozy.
Second. I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
And then I would move to appoint Jason Miller as the regular member of TEC.
Second.
All right, so I have a motion from Member Nelson and I have a second from Member Muskoso. Any discussion from council? Vice Mayor Cole? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Member Nelson?
And the last position, we usually have a rule that somebody can't be on two boards. And for that reason, Kevin would not be qualified. However, one of the boards, Parks and Rec, as I understand it, is a county board. And we do have people that serve on county boards and on city boards. So my motion would be to appoint Kevin Rosa as the alternate.
Second. I have a motion from Member Nelson, second from Vice Mayor Cole. Discussion member, still Cole?
Yeah, I just want to make sure if Kevin is, wants to be the alternate or not, because it was up for regular. So I just want to clarify with him if he is interested in that.
I could tell you, people miss meetings all the time. People miss meetings all the time. So if you're an alternate, you can slide right in.
Okay, yeah. So I wanted to make sure of that. And then to get clarification, because it is an alternate from our city attorney, is that okay for him to be on Parks and Rec and be an alternate?
It, it would be. And, and as stated, it would even be if it was a regular member because of that.
Because of its county board?
It wouldn't be a dual office holding situation, not with these kind of boards.
Okay, great. Okay, that's all I had.
Yeah, you don't want to bring up the fact that the vice mayor's on another board. I'm just kidding. All right, so if I remember correctly, I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Vice Mayor Cole. We had some discussion, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Congratulations, you two. Thank you very much. Thank you for all who applied. Now we're at the time of the meeting where we're petitions or requests from the public, non-agenda items. Am I seeing none?
I know we do have Mr. Wilson here again.
I'm sorry, who?
Mr. Wilson on the flag.
Okay.
And I don't think he knows he needs to come up at this time.
Mr. Wilson, would you like the floor?
Mayor Connors, council members. I was here the last meeting on September the 9th in regards to the corrective display of the American flag. I'm a fanatic on the display of the flag. One case in point is the Fire Department Headquarters at 550 South Washington Street, right across the street here. And I met with the fire chief and explained once again that I explained last time, that the Fire Department in front of, the flag poles in front of the Fire Department contained American flag and a state flag. And right now, they're the opposite way. The observer, any observer to the American flag should always be on the left. No matter where you go, the American flag is always on the left. And their, why they don't have it on the left is beyond me. The fire chief stated, I said, the front of the building is the headquarters with the administration offices. And also, the, the, the flag poles are roughly 100 feet away in front of it, which would be to the south. And then you got the parking lot and all, anybody looking at that from that point, the flag should be, the American flags should be on the left. And also, anybody driving down North Washington would be the same way. The flag would be on their left, but it's not. And he stated that he talked to the city manager and the city manager said he didn't see any problem with the situation. And I beg to disagree with that. I don't know whether the city manager is qualified to know how the flag is supposed to be displayed. But any place you go in the country, here or any place in Titusville or any, on any stage in a church or school, when you got two flags, the American flag is always on the left, no matter where you're at. And I don't know what, why they, they're adamant about leaving the flag the way they got it over there. They've got the, the American flag is on the right and the state flag is on the left. But you go in the administration office and coming out, they've got two stands like you've got here and the American flag is on the left, the state flag is on the right.
Thank, thank you very much, sir.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Stan Johnston, 860 Pointz Avenue, former professional engineer, city Titusville. I want to mention this, that Barbara Evans was up here at the last, one of the last council meetings. And she talked about a successful program called SOB to rescue our access to our beach. And I just want to say is that her and her husband were very successful in that movement. I was involved in it also. That was back in the 80s, I guess it was. It was some time ago. And so I'm hoping that the city will, will maybe successful again prevail. So I'm thankful that Barbara came and spoke to us. again prevail. So I'm thankful that Barbara came and spoke to us. I just handed Wanda an email that I sent to all council members today, so I don't see that I have to send you another copy, because you already have it sent today to you at 2:31 PM. And the, the title of it is called, "A Request for Titusville's Meeting Minutes to Reflect Document My and All Removals by Mayor Connors From Podium That May Be Considered as Violations of Our Constitutional Rights of Freedom of Speech." This is an important issue. And we just, the city just approved the meeting minutes for two meetings in which I was removed from the podium under duress. And I said that this was unconstitutional. The constitutional is important. In fact, is all you people here, up in front of me, and all these people in the military, including Mr. Abadi, took an oath of office, including me, and my, my dad, and many of my uncles, and cousins and so forth. We've taken that oath of office as to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. So you've taken that oath of office, but as far as I'm concerned, it looks like you're not honoring it. That's a big deal. So that's why I've written this letter. And the letter furthermore goes on and says, "I therefore find it fitting and proper," it says, "I find it fitting and proper for Titusville's meeting minutes to reflect document my and all removals by Mayor Connors from podium that may be considered as violations of our constitutional rights of freedom of speech. I therefore request meeting minutes reviewed today for meetings dated August 26th and September 11th. To be amended as requested, please respond." I think you should do it. And I'm, I'm asking Wanda if, if she will get permission from whoever she needs to do it, that, that indeed is that, when I'm removed, is that I'm-
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
It's noted in the meeting minutes. Okay, nobody responded?
Thank you.
Sorry. Nobody, nobody.
Petitions or requests from the public, non-agenda items. Seeing none. City Manager?
Yes, moving on to consent. We have six items on the consent agenda. Do any member of council wish to pull any of the six items from the consent agenda?
I'm not seeing any light, City Manager, but I would like to pull item A.
A. I'll go ahead and read items 8B, C, D, E, and F for the record. Consent agenda item 8B, Keep of Our Beautiful Adopt an Area Program Agreement. Approve the agreement with Keep of Our Beautiful, KBB, for the adopt an area program, and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement. 8C, granting easements to Florida Power and Light. Approve the request of utility easements to Florida Power and Light, and authorize city manager to execute the required documentation. 8D, solar lighting Spaceview Park. Approve the award of the solar lighting Spaceview Park contract to TPG Lighting of Sanford, Florida, in the amount of $72,786 for the installation of 10 solar lights with associated poles and foundations at the Spaceview Park walkway, and authorize the mayor to execute said contract. Pending approval, actually, the budget's been approved. 8E, advisability, acceptance of firefighter cancer decontamination equipment grant program for FY '26. Accept firefighter cancer decontamination equipment grant award for the purchase of one personal protective equipment, PPE, decon washer, and one six-set gear dryer, and delegate authority to city manager to execute purchase order and any grant acceptance agreement. The grant value of $36,446.10 and fund from fire department operating budget not to exceed $15,000. 8F, approve the emergency purchase order, Garden Street, State Route 406, and US Number One, repaired due to water main break. Approve the emergency purchase order issued to Massey General Contractors of Port Orange, Florida, in the amount of $345.60 for the restoration of the impacted areas of Garden Street, State Route 406, and US One, including milling and asphalt overlay related to the water main repair.
Thank you very much, City Manager. City Clerk, can you call the cards for items B through F?
Yes, sir. Kay Saint Orange for item B.
Kay Saint Orange, Maryland Avenue. Yes, I wish to support the agreement with this, between the city and KBB for adoption area. What a great idea. Don't just adopt a highway, but a whole area. I hope many community organizations, especially youth groups, will participate so as to reduce the litter that lines our streets, fills up our baffle boxes at great expense for us to vacuum them out, and often ends up in the lagoon. Please approve this agreement with KBB, and let's get the litter picked up. Let's spruce up Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kay.
Thanks.
Got too excited.
Sandra Ozong.
Ms. Sandra?
Well, I totally agree with Kay. I'm Sandra Ozong with Keep of Our Beautiful, and I just wanted to say that we are very excited about partnering with the city of Titusville to get the adoption area, beaches, shorelines, trails, parks, streets, et cetera. And we're very excited to be working with the department, the, the city to get this going. And I also wanted to introduce to you a new member of Keep of Our Beautiful's staff in Cocoa, living here in Titusville, Ms. Summer Will Brant. Ms. Will Brant, please stand with me. Ms. Will Brant is the Environmental Education and Programs Coordinator for Keep of Our Beautiful. And part of Summer's role will be to coordinate the adoption area for the entire county of Brevard. So we welcome her. She's just joined in September, September 1st. And I'm sure that with Titusville and all of us working together, we will tidy up Titusville.
Thank you. Thank you very much. City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnson on item, let's see, B, C, no, sorry, item B, C, D, and F.
Stan Johnson, I'll start with number D, solar lighting Spaceview Park. I'm against the spending of the money, this much money, because you need to consider what you've done. And if you look behind me, you'll see a skull and crossbones, right there. Skull and crossbones. I posted a skull and crossbones at Spaceview Park after February the 18th, which was in, it was, what's his name? Jim Thomas was with me, and we had two police officers come with us. And the city of Titusville constructed a diversion berm. And so this has to do with Spaceview Park. See what's going to Spaceview Park. And anyhow, so I put up a sign, because the fowls were still on, and-
Mr. Johnson, please get on topic.
This is, this has to do with Spaceview Park.
Not about the item on the table.
Beg your pardon?
It's not about the item on the table.
Oh, it is. You're spending $72,000. I don't, I'm against it. I just, I just told you that. I don't, I wish you wouldn't take my time. Because here's what's happened, is that I wanted to bring this sign forward to show to you. So I would like Wanda to express in, in the meeting minutes, is that I, I, I'm asking to take this sign forward because you won't allow me. I believe that you're violating my rights of freedom of speech because I cannot bring this sign, because I had a similar sign removed.
Your rights of freedom of speech are not on the table. Please have a seat.
Beg your pardon?
Your rights of freedom of speech are not what we are discussing. Please have a seat. You forfeit the remainder of your time.
This is what happened at Spaceview Park.
Please have a seat.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm doing this under duress, Wanda.
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, is that the last card?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much. Member Muskoso?
Sure, I, I fully support the KBB initiative, and so thank you for bringing that forward. I think it would be kind of neat if our council adopted an area. It'd be good team building and leading by example. So, look at all these happy faces. But I do have a question about this. Is this, so is the city paying for these signs to go in? And then, like, how is that working? Is that budgeted in already?
This is not a budgeted item.
Okay.
There's no cost to the city.
So this, so KBB is paying for the signage and everything? Is that correct?
We didn't, we didn't understand that we would, but we can, we'll, we will be working with the city. And we will, we're working to decide how we're going to get the signs paid.
Okay.
But there will be a fee for every organization that joins the adoption area. It's $200. And that $200 fee does go to support the program.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right. Real quick, City Manager, in the agreement it says, the sign will be purchased and installed by the city.
It's not an item that is in, currently in our budget, but we can find funds for it. I'm sure it's a nominal amount.
All right. Mr. Cook, do you know approximately how much the signs are going to cost, not holding your feet to the fire?
Twenty to thirty dollars. We made them in the past for any donation areas, so this will be made by our sign shop.
Okay. So I'm assuming City Council doesn't have any issues with that. All righty. And with that being said, I'll entertain a motion. Member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda items B through F.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further council discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Looking forward to working with you guys. All right, City Manager?
Next item is 8A. You pulled from the Agenda Resolution Number 17-2025, amending Resolution Number 30-2023 relating to the registration fee for vacant properties with mortgages in default. And the recommended action is to approve Resolution 17-2025 establishing a $300 registration fee for real properties with mortgages in default.
Thank you very much, City Manager. City Clerk?
We have one card. It's Stan Johnson.
This, this particular issue, 8A, is, has to do with some, that we've already had discussion on, and I believe it was with, I think it was Glenn Tolson, is that correct? Yeah, Glenn Tolson, and some issues that have to do with this, this item. I just, I was just speaking on items 8B, 8C, 8D, and 8F. And so I was removed from speaking on those items just a few minutes ago, which is, I find it to be very disturbing, considering that I was just stopped, couldn't speak anymore.
Mr. Johnson, you're not on topic. I might caution you.
So on this particular issue, I am concerned with this registration fee and mortgages being in default. And this, but it appears that this amount of $300 is, is much less than some other cities, cities do. But it seems to be more reasonable than what some cities do. So I'm not against it. And I'm, I hope I'm allowed to speak about it, although I wasn't allowed to speak about the other, about three of the four items I was to speak on. So I'm not going to speak anymore on this, on this items, but I just want to say again, it's, Wanda, please recognize what happened the last on 8, B, C, D, and F. My removal.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Under duress.
So I, I pulled this item for further discussion because, you know, it is a resolution, but not only that, but it contains a portion of our code. And we're talking with the city attorney, how the code reads versus what the resolution states. And I, I believe when we initially kind of pushed forward with this, I believe that the fee we're paying to the vendor was $75 in RFP. I believe I read in the contract resolution that it's split 50/50, 150 for them, 150 for us. Is that correct?
The, the current contract, once it's signed, would be that the city would receive 75% and here properties would receive $75. So it splits the 150. The direction was to bring back the resolution to raise the fees to $300, which would be a 150/150 split.
All righty. Because I read in the RFP that it was a $75 fixed rate. Was that rate based on what we are currently charging?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
With, actually I had to craft it due to the fact that that is the current code. Once the transition starts, the $300 if approved this evening would then be in effect, so the contract would then reflect a 50/50 share, if you would, as opposed to a dollar amount. And then that way, if we add services or, or other type things, we wouldn't have to come back and, and do the split again.
Okay. Thank you very much for that explanation. I was just making sure I understood.
Yes, sir.
Because I noticed small details like that of a, a dollar figure change. But the other issue I want to bring up with council is the way that our code is currently, currently written, is we're only requiring this registry one time a year. And it raises concerns to banks who foreclose on our residents here in Titusville. Oftentimes, a bank will foreclose, and then they'll sell that foreclosed mortgage to somebody else, and then somebody else, and then somebody else. I mean, it's very possible that a note could change hands a couple times a year. And so, and I do believe, when we were looking at this, there are other cities that require it more than one time a year. So it'd be my recommendation that we would charge a $300 registration fee twice a year, to make sure we're, A, keeping up with the information needed, and B, you know, let's be honest, we're charging out-of-town banks, we're foreclosing on our people. You know, let's, let's make sure that they are in compliance with our rules. Now, the issue I brought up with our city attorney is, how could we do it? You know, we could maybe amend the resolution to say we're going to collect a, a $600 fee twice a year, because really, the fee is kind of what is able to be approved by resolution without a full-on ordinance change and how often we collect it. But that would be my recommendation to, to council. And I just wanted to bring that up and have you all weigh in. Member Nelson?
I didn't feel totally comfortable with that. On the other hand, when it goes from one bank to another bank, I don't have any problem charging that second bank. And that seems appropriate.
Okay, I was just making sure. All right. Member Muskoso?
I mean, I see that Miami-Dade County does it per registration. Is that kind of what you're, that's what I would think could work, but I don't know how we codify that, if that's the question. I'm not understanding the $600 in the code. That's the part I'm a little confused on.
So it doesn't say anything about a dollar amount in the code. It's approved by resolution, the dollar amount. But in the code, it says we collect the fee one time a year. So the question is, is if we'd move it to twice a year, we would have to change ordinance. Or if, per resolution, if we take this dollar amount and just say, hey, we're going to do it twice a year, or a specific dollar amount paid out two specific times a year, it would be a potential way without having to full-on ordinance change. Member Muskoso?
Glenn, do you know how often these are changing hands? Do you guys keep track of that? And what would be your recommendation, since you're kind of in this world?
Well, actually, every time that it changes hands and comes from one vendor to another, we, we collect again each time. We've had some properties I've collected three or four times on already. And again, it's at the direction of the council. If we go and you go to twice a year, that would also have to be something that we may have to go back to here at properties, because that's, that's not in their contract with the city currently. So it would be an ordinance change and then a contract change on top of it. But Mr. Johnson's here tonight.
Thank you. You can come up and talk if you want to. Member Stokoe, did you have something? I'm going to wait for him to come up.
Yeah, that was kind of my question, is if we can see what is possible. I mean, if we need to do another ordinance change. I mean, if we need to do another ordinance change, I guess we can. I do feel a little frustrated just because we had already asked to do that and change the process, the fee last time. And now I feel like we're changing it again potentially. But I'm not opposed to it. I just want to see what our options are with the vendor to see, can, can you guys do it every time it changes? How does that work or what have you seen?
Yes, so CJ Johnson here, Property Registry, Melbourne, Florida. So we track all the properties as they change hands. So we, we know. And to answer the question I was asked very often. And we have about half of our clients do it biannually. So it's not an issue for us to track.
Can I do a follow-up?
Yeah.
So with that, since it's, right now, it's once a year that we have. What happens when it does change hands? Does that trigger anything on your end? Or do we just wait, like, hey, you already did it in January? And we have to wait till January to see who that potential new owner is?
So we track it internally. And then we'll notify the party. It, it really depends on the ordinance language, if there's a requirement to re-register with a change of party. Or if they just need to update information. So we'll track all that information. And regardless of whether our registration is owed or not, we notify the new party that there is a update requirement or a new registration requirement at the time that we notice the change.
Okay. And then my, I think my last question would be, is it appears we might be going to needing to change our ordinance because right now it is once a year. So if we were to want to potentially do it per registration, which is what I was hearing, would you recommend, based on what you've seen with your clients, that we do per registration or twice a year? Can you say that?
Yes, so the way that it would work if there was an ordinance change would be that there would be a requirement to register it twice a year. Or registration upon change of ownership.
Okay.
So the registration would happen either every six months after the filing of the initial foreclosure documents, which we would track those dates. Or every time it changes from one party to the next, which could happen more often than every six months.
Yeah. And I think that's where I lean toward, because I don't really want to make it cumbersome for them, like, every six months if they're the same owner. But if they keep changing, I do kind of like the idea of every time it changes. So, okay.
And I will say, best practices nationwide right now is moving towards every six months, getting fresher information that's more up to date.
Okay, that's good to know. Okay.
And remember, it's just about crafting rules to hold these banks accountable to providing us the most updated information. And just remember, these are people foreclosing on our citizens.
And then, correct.
Whether it's difficult or not is.
And then I'm wondering if we could do an ordinance change where it just says, we have a registration process, see the resolution that has the rules versus us saying once a year? And then that gives us a little bit.
City Attorney?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, the, the reason we did this was in an attempt to, to make, because it's easier to change dollar amounts by resolution. But, you know, it, it was, I assume not anticipated at the time that there'd be a desire to change from annual to, to biannual. So, yeah, we could do that and, and clean up a few of the other things.
Okay. That's kind of, I think, where I'm leaning toward. I'd rather, I know it makes it a little bit longer, but I'd rather do it right and have a system in place that works for us. That's kind of where I'm leaning.
Yeah, so again, appreciate the discussion. Member Nelson?
So would it be easier to table and have you come back?
Well, I mean, my thought would be, since, if, if you pass this resolution tonight, that could, that could put us into that new fee right now while staff and, and legal work on the ordinance changes. Because that's going to require two, it's going to take a while to prepare and then two readings. So it may be two or three months before the ordinance gets done.
So the people that are charging twice a year, what is their average rate that they're paying? How much do they pay?
Well, there's, there's many of them. But the average nationally is $350 every six months. So, I mean, Hillsborough County is charging every six months. You have many in Illinois, in the Northeast, doing that as well. Florida's starting to move in that, in that area. Most, a lot of the Florida ordinances were in place basically 2008, 2009, 2010. So they need some updates anyway, according to what the best practices of coming out are. So, and we've been helping many of the cities and counties change their ordinances. But we're seeing the national average is 350 every six months.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Nelson. And again, I appreciate the discussion, council. I just remember from the last time this came before us, when we were talking about this, I, those figures stood out to me, you know, of an average dollar amount of $350 every six months. And I kind of want to make sure that we're, we're in line with that, so that we're doing the best thing for our residents here. With that being said, under the recommendation of Mr. Stokes over there, anybody want to make a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve Resolution Number 17-2025.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, second from Vice Mayor Cole. I'd be remiss if I didn't say thank you for your insight and your input. City Clerk?
Member Moscoso? Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Vice Mayor Cole?
Do we need a motion for the other thing?
No, we, staff and legal. We have your, we have your direction. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Because I'm not afraid to call, roll call vote. I'm just kidding. Thank you, Mr. Stokes. City Manager?
So moving on to ordinance second reading 9A, the applicant has requested the right-of-way vacate application number 2-2025 to be tabled until October 14th.
Do we need a motion to table that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, and, and I'd table it to a date and time certain so that, so.
October 14th.
October 14th at 6:30 PM.
Okay. Move to table right-of-way vacate application 2-2025 to October 14th.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. City Manager?
The next item is quasi-judicial and City Attorney will read the rules for that hearing.
Yes. During the public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi-judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. These cards are located at the table at the entrance of the chambers and should be provided to the clerk. Those speaking in favor of our request will be heard first. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire the City Council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, have you received signed oath cards from persons wishing to speak before the City Council swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth on this item? Staff and applicant, please ensure all witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card and presented it to the clerk. If there is anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on this quasi-judicial item, please submit a card to the clerk at this time. City clerk, has all Agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made part of the record. Also, in the event that the member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding this quasi-judicial item, said visitor opinion shall be disclosed. If written ex parte communications exist, verify that applicant has received them and has had the opportunity to review and is ready to proceed. Regarding the order of this item, first, the council will receive staff's presentation, followed by a presentation by the applicant. Following the applicant's presentation, the floor will be open to the public comment. The applicant will, may make a rebuttal. Witnesses may be cross-examined by the applicant, a party, council, or a staff representative as authorized by council. The council's decision must be based on competent substantial evidence pursuant to Florida statute. If the council denies this application for this development permit, the council shall cite the applicable portion of the ordinance, rule, statute, or other legal authority for the denial.
Thank you very much, City Attorney. Mr. Parrish?
The staff or the Agenda item begins on page 335 of your report of your agenda. And the reason why this conditional use permit is being brought before you for light industrial use to be located in existing building on Grissom Parkway is because the property, although it is zoned M1, which is a, which is a light manufacturing, a warehouse zoning district. The code specifically says in Section 28-210(c1a) states, "In the light industrial services and warehousing M1 zoning district manufacturing, a conditional use permit shall be required when the comprehensive plan, future land use designation, is not industrial." And so on, in your packet, you will see maps, including the aerial, which shows, clearly shows the building surrounded by a lot of vacant and unimproved properties. The pro, there is a map in there, the future land use map, that shows the commercial land use on that property, with another map in the Agenda for the zoning that shows M1. So they are required to go through this process. We reviewed it based on the criteria of the code. Our staff report begins on 337 of your packet. We did not find anything that was related to a nuisance that, that we could recommend denial or even special conditions on this. So we recommend approval as consistent with the comprehensive plan, the landable regulations, and the criteria for conditional use permit.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parrish. City Clerk?
We only have one card. It's Dan Johnston.
My, my name is Stan Johnston. I've worked for the city of Titusville for over seven years as a professional engineer. And I was paid about, I was paid a good bit higher than what they wanted to pay, but they paid it anyways to get me. And I've been a member of Talbada Pi Engineering Honorary Society. And I'm the only, only engineer and surveyor that I know of who was, who was, who was still active, who has done site plans, the surveying, the planning, and the surveying before, surveying as-built surveying, and so forth. Only one who in this county, and as far as I know, even in Orange County. Maybe there is somebody, but I don't know of anybody. So I have some skills that I'm sharing with you because in many areas, I'm, I'm an expert. I'm not an expert in everything. But regarding site plans and subdivisions, I'm an expert, as can also be witnessed by my, one of my former supervisors, Richard Votopka, who was city engineer. And also by what's in my portfolio they have as me, as, as my, in performance evaluation that's still in the, under human resources. So it's very good. It's very good evaluation that I have. Although I have this evaluation, as you can understand, is that I'm completely disrespected and maligned by the City Council. Four or five of you, including just horrible things. So on this particular issue, though, I am, I consider myself to be an expert on, on this and also of the previous issue, the right-of-way vacation. So I, I put down on this one is that I'm certainly, I, I believe that I want to say is, is that I do not have any objections to this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. City Clerk, no other cards? All right. Close this public hearing. Member Nelson?
Based on staff's analysis, I would move to approve CUP 8-2025 to provide, to permit light manufacturing use at 7980 Grissom.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from City Council? Seeing none, City Clerk?
I just want to verify that that's consistent with the approved concept plan as well.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Member Nelson and Vice Mayor both agreed. The motioner and the seconder.
Roll call is Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Connors?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Moscoso?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time, Mr. Parrish. City Manager?
The next item is ordinance second reading 10A, small scale, application 2. H2024. It was advertised, however, the applicant withdrew it prior to the Agenda being published. So therefore, the item will not be heard.
All righty. City Manager?
Moving on to the next item is old business, and that is the Titusville Social Services Ad-Hoc Committee. And as you recall, at our last meeting, Terry Franklin, Neighborhood Services Director, provided the advisability for staff to form an ad hoc committee to go over the Harry T. Moore Center Social Services capabilities and activities. And she's here to address any questions concerning the application process.
Hi, Mr. Terry.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. So we have before you the recommendations to create this ad hoc committee. On page 364 of your Agenda, you'll find the recommendations that we have outlined for the ad hoc committee. And the creation of the temporary committee is to assist staff in understanding the community's views on the gaps in social services, not only in Titusville but countywide. Some considerations that I looked at in coming up with recommendations included our annual survey process that we conduct with our service providers. We do that annually to gain information about who's out there, what's out there, and where is those services provided? So I think the ad hoc would play a key role in analyzing the gaps. And I see it as complementing that annual process that we have with our providers. We would like to establish the ad hoc committee as quickly as possible. So I have provided an application deadline of November 15 in the recommendations, so we can get going. And I just wanted to clarify, I noticed in reading over this that I didn't really outline what I wanted to say in the objective part for the appointments of the members to the committee. So where it says that five members are appointed by City Council, that was so that each of you could appoint a member to the committee. If there was two additional committee members that we would like to include, then those would be through a majority vote. And if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Thank you very much. Can I get to the cards first?
Yes, sir. Tony Shifalo.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. While I really appreciate the intention of this and Ms. Franklin's efforts, I only have one thing to say. And that is that the timing of the meetings has proposed a really kind of, an imposition on, on working people. It's proposed that there'll be one meeting for an hour on a Wednesday afternoon at 3:00 PM. And I would think that the people that will be represented by the different areas that are served, they're mostly poor people, poor working people. And I would think that taking a Wednesday afternoon at 3:00 to go to a one-hour, possibly two-hour meeting would be kind of a real imposition. So I would like to see if we could not adjust the time of the meeting. But otherwise, wow, what a great plan. I really miss the community services that were at the center before things changed. I kind of figured it was going to be forever. And then it just, one day, wasn't there anymore. And there were a lot of services I think you'll find that that neighborhood needs. And I realize it's not just the one community, the one neighborhood. I do realize, I, I looked at your maps and things. But I think no matter what community they're coming from, 3:00 on a Wednesday afternoon will be difficult. I know that because I'm on the Historic Preservation Board and we meet on a Monday at 1:00 PM. And there are not even any police here. at one P.M., and there are not even any police here to check and make sure I'm not bringing weapons to the room. Gee, you know, so, timing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shifalo. City Clerk?
Lynn Golden.
Lynn Golden, eleven-hundred Country Club Boulevard, Titusville, Florida. First of all, I would like to tell the board to please keep Sister Wendy Houston in prayer. She lost her daughter, I think, yesterday or Sunday, and she's in the hospital herself over in Orlando. And she was a ex, uh, employee for the city for many years, so keep her in prayer. Um, as I say, my name is Lynn Golden, and I am the president of the Concerned Citizen Group. I'm here tonight to express my concern in the community about the social service center at Harry T. Moore Center on De Leon Street. I have two aunts, one is a hundred and one, one is ninety-seven, and they're still living in the community. They grew up, and they could give you history about the community and the things that once was provided at the social service center. Community service is important because it's strengthening our community by, by providing vital support and filling services gap. I talked to several people yesterday about what they would like to see to come back into the social service center. People that worked in professional office, people come in and say, "Where do we go for an answer? What do we do?" And they were willing to be one of the volunteers on the board. They are tired of going places and talk to people for thirty minutes on hold when they can face-to-face people if we bring them back into the social service center. I would like to see someone that lives predominantly in the neighborhood, according to, I think, Terry has a map or something, where they need to be. I would like to see a, uh, suitable age-appropriate, that we just don't pick old people like me, but we pick young people to be on this committee. And I would also like to see a city group, community group, not all blacks that live in the community, but whites that live in the community, Hispanic or whoever. I also would like to enhance the community, the things that need to come back, food banks, networking, and this will help our community and to assist others. It teaches us how to help others in need ones, a less fortunate than us. The community service broaden your horizon and help to understand. So I'm praying that the application and the board members that you would choose is based on improving the community. And I don't know who documented the community is, the application, is it ready yet or no?
It will be if it's approved.
All right. Hopefully that it will be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Golden. City Clerk?
Susan Pender.
My name is Susan Pender. Um, I live on twelve-twenty-eight First Avenue. Uh, I grew up in Titusville, and I've been gone for over fifty years, so I'm retired and I'm back. Um, Harry T. Moore Community Center, I, I'm a follow-up what Lynn, uh, stated, but I'm gonna give a little bit more meat to it, um, the role and impact and purpose. The Harry T. Moore Community Center should stand as an essential facility dedicated to addressing the needs and fostering the growth of the local community. Its ability and se, and accessibility makes it access to the residents in the target areas, supporting the various programs and services. The role of the center, the prime role of the Harry T. Moore Center, should serve as a vital resource for the community, provide a welcoming, accessible location where residents can gather, participate, excuse me, in activities and benefit from range of support of services. The center is committed to supporting the growth and development within the neighborhood. It serves acting as a cornerstone for positive change. The community resource and services as a, as a center community resource, the center should, or the center was and should, be designed to meet a broad spectrum of needs for individuals, groups throughout the area. Uh, its programs and services included, but not limited to assisting with applications for, for various services, providing pantry assistance for those in need, supporting literacy through reading programs, serving as a site for voter registration and elections, helping with the acquisition of birth certificates, offering, uh, clothes, banks for community members, organizing community meals, providing tax assistance, hosting community events, and offering job search resources and, uh, P.C. classes. Um, North Brevard Charities provided that, uh, maybe been a couple of years ago, and it was managed by Lira Smith. She is now retired, and after she, um, then Brevard Services moved back over to Hawkins. So all of that, um, contact, community care, basically, kind of moved away with her, and the community trusted Ms. Smith, as well as the individuals who were serving them. So the services.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
City Clerk?
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm gonna say, whatever, heard, I've said many times before, is that, uh, we're very fortunate to have Terry Franklin aboard. She's, uh, been handling the affairs of this area for many years, and she's done a fantastic job. So, uh, we're lucky to have her. I don't have any other comments to make. I did put a letter in that has to do with some other, uh, issues I had with the city that I sent you an email today, dated September the twenty-third. So, uh, I may be speaking on some other issues later, but, uh, thank you, Terry.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Lynn.
All right, before I, uh, open up, uh, for discussion, I, I just want to say how incredibly vital this is. Um, down in Cocoa, they use the city building to outsource the, the management of social services to Family Promise of Brevard, which is very, very key in, in keeping families together and bringing in the various different nonprofits from, uh, Brevard Health Alliance to help me grow, to accelerate Brevard, to, uh, Career Source, if I didn't already mention that one. Um, and what I was told in my conversations with their executive director is, you know, they did asset man, mapping with data and all the different service providers out there, and did, used all the data of what the needs of the community were, and what they found is the community didn't use it. And so they had to kind of go back to the community and kind of figure out, uh, what use, what was needed. And so they, they retooled, they adapted, they changed some things, and, uh, I'm, I'm very excited about that. Uh, but my one recommendation, uh, to, to our staff, if possible, is, I believe Parrish also picked up on the data-driven model of asset mapping and is now running that for North Brevard. And so if we could, uh, use that data to feed some hard numbers, uh, to the committee so that they can see the objective data versus, you know, they're kind of dealing in the subjective, like what, what makes sense to them, maybe individually or close family members. So, um, that would be my recommendation with that in terms of, uh, what the committee could potentially discuss. Uh, but in regards to the formation, structure, and, uh, guidelines, um, I'm very, very flexible. So with that being said, uh, Member Nelson? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry. Member Moscoso, I don't know why I called on you.
She was gonna draw in front of me.
I knew you were gonna see.
I was gonna turn my light.
I know. Member Moscoso.
Thank you. Um, I did meet with North Brevard Charities this week, and I know that they are itching to get back into, um, that building. So it was exciting to hear the projects and the ideas that they have moving forward. Um, I would say, I know that this is kind of, I'm almost like a pilot program because it's only six months for one hour, so, I mean, our meetings sometimes go for six hours, and it's hard to accomplish a lot once you get going. So is there a possibility for this to extend after six months?
That would be up to council.
Absolutely. Yeah, I, that's very limiting. Only six months, an hour, um, per, per week. We certainly can extend that.
Okay.
As council desires, as the committee sees fit.
Okay. And then I, um, on the application itself, there's a, a section that says, um, please, like, write the services that you have received, and since this is going to be public record, could that just be a yes or no? Like, have you received services? Yes or no in that way? Some people might not feel comfortable writing down all the services that they have received. I think the idea is, have you received services, just to make sure that you're actually part of the community in that sense.
Yeah, uh, we will definitely, if that's what it says, we will, um, correct it. Yeah.
Um, and then my last thing is, I, I know that we are able to appoint a person, but I don't know if it would be beneficial or if the community would actually want to have, uh, maybe one or two nonprofits in the area that are doing work, um, be part of that community so that when the community's saying, "We need this, this, and this," they can say, "Actually, we do have those services," or, you know, and that could help instead of spending an hour saying, "We want all of these things." There could be somebody in the community that's doing it that they're not aware of, and I'm not sure if that's even something the community wants, um, but just a thought, um, to see if it might be beneficial to have someone who's working in that realm to, at least maybe attend those meetings, just so that they can say, "Hey, we're already doing this," or, um, "That's a great idea, we haven't done it," or "We did this and it failed in the past." Um, but that's really up to the community, just a, an idea.
If, if I may, uh, uh, years ago, we used to have a budget advisory committee, and during that, we would bring in different entities to come in and to talk to the committee about different services, financial services, et cetera, and different ways of providing municipal services. I would see a real correlation there of having the ad hoc committee bring in different, um, nonprofits and say, "What can you provide?"
Yeah.
You know, as example.
So perhaps, like, may, maybe the first meeting would just be?
Right.
The nonprofits come in and, "This is what we provide," and from there, they, they take it.
They could invite different agencies to come in, "How can you help us?"
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Uh, I definitely agree with, uh, that young lady back there, that the time of the meeting should not be at three o'clock. I mean, it needs to be after work, so people could, we can ensure people can make the meetings. Now, everything that the speaker said, I'm hoping that that's the purpose of our ad hoc committee, that those kinds of things would be incorporated in what they do. And we would also have some form of advisor in there to help with the services that they would need and who they would be able to contact, or have a list of the services that are already provided in the community that would be for them. My other question is, the application says boards and commission. Now, wouldn't this be an ad hoc committee and not a board, per, per se?
So with every committee, yes, that is true. With every committee, we use the city standard application, and then we have a supplemental, uh, page for each.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Member Nelson?
Um, I agree with Vice Mayor about the time, because if we want to attract younger people, they're working, and so they're not going to come at three o'clock, three-thirty. So, but the other thing that caught my eye is, we're talking about each one of us appointing somebody. Why not just do it where people apply and we vote on them?
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Nelson. Member Stokel?
Yeah, that's what I was getting from it. Um, I know, Terry, you kind of clarified it, but when I read it, I, I think that's kind of what we can decide, so I feel like, once we get the pool of applicants, obviously we can try to tell people to apply, and then, I think, once we have that pool, hopefully we can have that discussion and we all agree on the top five. If, for some reason, where you see the applicants and we're like, "Hey, can we all just say who our top person is?" We could decide to do it that way, too. But I, I'd like to see the pool of applicants.
And I think it brings up an especially challenging point, is per the guidelines that were written, it said, three people of the committee had to live within a certain geographical boundary. So then, who among us, if we were each appointing one, right, and there's then two at large, who would be like, "Okay, are you picking this person or am I picking this person?" And then it kind of gets into a, a potential conflict with Sunshine. So, um, I, I like the idea of, you know, let's, let's advertise it, let's get it out to the community, let's encourage, uh, people that run nonprofits in our community to apply, let's encourage the concerned citizens to apply, let's get everybody, um, on board, because we want to hear from everybody, whether they're on the committee or not, their voices still matter, and they're definitely more than welcome to come to these meetings. Um, and again, they're just recommendations for us as we move forward, so, uh, I very much appreciate it. Um, so can I have a motion to move forward with, um, advertising the committee and the application, but we're gonna change the time to TBD? Uh, maybe we should include on the application, what times are you available?
That might not be a bad idea.
I think we would want, staff would want to know a time that you're recommending, so we can include that when we send out the invitations.
I would say, my thought is five-thirty. Let people get home, change, come to the meeting.
It does discriminate against second shift workers, but, you know, you're never in a funny, you're never in a funny time. All right, so.
So the motion would be to approve the ad hoc committee?
I'm sorry. Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. We just noticed that after-hours, it conflicts with T E.C. and planning and zoning in many of these months.
That's why we had the three o'clock initially.
Can you make it on a Thursday?
That conflicts with other meetings.
Yeah.
Do the same people need to be there for the ad hoc committee, though?
I'm sorry?
Do the same people need to be there that are there for T E.C. are the same people that need to be at the ad hoc committee?
The meetings can happen currently, it's just that if you're concerned about members who want to attend both one or the meeting, they will, they'll have to choose.
They have to choose.
They have to choose. That's kind of how I'm looking at it, yeah.
So approve the ad hoc committee guidelines with the changes and authorize the, uh, application process with the changes and the time after-hours.
All right, and just so we're all clear on the changes, five-thirty timeframe for a start, right? And then all applications will come through council, and we'll vote on them collectively, and, um.
Get rid of the, uh.
The districts and, and things like that.
Yeah, what, what services you've used.
Yeah. All right.
Second?
All right. All right, so I have a motion and I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work putting this together. City Manager?
Yes, sir. We have, uh, no items on the new business. Next is petitions and requests.
Anybody for petitions and requests, non-agenda items? Seeing none, we're moving right along. I guess it gets to mayor and council reports. Um, I was just gonna say, I just have one thing. Um, I feel like we've seen each other a lot recently between budget hearings and executive sessions and everything else, uh, but an idea kind of circulated to do, um, a turkey giveaway at Isaac Campbell Park was kind of my suggested location. I have, um, people that donate to, you know, nonprofits and donate to our community, uh, they can, they normally do like a, a, a feed, and my recommendation to them was, why don't we just give out the frozen turkeys the, the Saturday before, uh, Thanksgiving? And there's been several nonprofits that were excited about the idea, and the idea kind of snowballed on me real quick, uh, but what I would be looking for from you guys is approval to, uh, do an Isaac Campbell Park on Saturday, um, November twenty-second to get people to donate turkeys and, and give them out to families that need it. I believe Unity in the Community has already, uh, said that they want to be a part of this because they were looking for ways to get involved anyway, and so they would like to, to cook and feed people and just kind of make it a, uh, fun family event to help, uh, feed families in need. So that would be my ask. Member Nelson?
Did you, by any chance, talk to North Brevard Charities? They, they do it every year.
I understand. I have not had a chance to talk. I understand, I have not had a chance to talk to them yet. I'm trying to get people that normally give out food around Thanksgiving, to get them to the right people, and I'm not trying to duplicate the wheel, I'm trying to kind of actually corral and work together, so I will be talking with North Pavar Charities. Again, this idea kind of snowballed on me, and after like, three groups said they were in, I was like, oh, hold on, I better, I better double check, right? And so, that's what I'm trying to do right now, is just leave that option on the table, I will be reaching out to them, like I said.
I would suggest reaching out to them, and also reach out to Parkus and Rec, because they're going to have, they're the ones to approve Isaac Campbell.
With it being the city park, the city can use it at any time, so. Is that all you had? All right, member Muscozo?
Yeah, sorry, just to be clear, I mean, I think it's a great idea, but it's the nonprofits that are spearheading, we're just allowing the location?
So, I'm just kind of corralling folks together to work together, so Unity within the community's coming to the table, we have a business owner who is going to donate fifteen frozen turkeys, and again, my next call was going to be to North Pavar Charities, but I even had a few other churches say, yeah, we're down to help donate food, to get it out to those folks that need it. And a lot of times when I see events happen around, because I went to a lot of them last year, sometimes access was a tough, tough point, so that's why I felt like, maybe if we did something and said, as a city, yes, you can do this, and get these nonprofits together to work on it together, it could be pretty successful at Isaac Campbell.
And, just so, like, our staff is clear, is the staff involved in this, or?
No.
I mean, we don't have to figure out logistics and things now, I'm just curious if this is just us saying you have the building, or that there'll be like additional things happening within our city?
No, what it would just require is the city supporting it with a special event permit, you know, and I think that's the biggest challenge for some nonprofits, is getting those things
Okay.
done, and by the way, it will come up eventually about the special event permit ordinance, and how troublesome it is, so with that being said, I figured it could be us doing the event, and corralling these nonprofits to get together, so we're not actually spending any city dollars, we're just helping facilitate.
Okay, thank you, I was just wondering.
And when I say we, I mean, not staff time.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Yeah, one of the things I wanted to make sure we understood, I worked with the North Pavar Charities many years when Rotary, as we gave out turkeys on the Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The one thing that I think that we need to make sure of is the fact that, at first, there were problems with people going to St. Teresa's, and coming to North Pavar Charity, and you looked at the back, because we were bag boys, you looked at the back of their car, and there was a lot of food back there. They eventually started a database, so you signed up as to where you were going to go, so you couldn't basically go three or four different places. My advice would be, I think it's a great idea, okay, and I know that I could, we could get our Rotary, all of our Rotary's clubs involved in it, but I'd like to make sure that when you talk to North Pavar Charities, because they should have access into that database, to make sure that people are signing up for this, and I would make the motion that we support this, in giving away the turkeys at Thanksgiving at Isaac Campbell Park.
Second?
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Cole, I have a second by Member Nelson, city clerk?
We have a card. Stan Johnston.
All right, thank you, Mr. Johnson, and so again, I appreciate any council support on this, again, we just help facilitate, not trying to duplicate the wheel, and make sure that we're all working together, so I appreciate it. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much, that's all I have for my report.
Vice Mayor Cole?
Okay, I have two things, one is, the last meeting, I think it was, that I reported a scam call that I had received purportedly from my doctor's office, and since I reported that here at council, and I did report it on Facebook, I've gotten numerous calls from people telling me that the same thing has happened to them. I just want to say it again, that, and I'll just reiterate what I said two weeks ago, I was sitting at home on a Thursday evening and got a call purportedly from my private physician, his telephone number, and the person on the other end was telling me I had a blood test a couple of weeks ago, which I did, and that my blood test came in, and I had anxiety and depression, and wanted to know if I had Alzheimer's and dementia in my family, and that they wanted to send me a saliva test that would be paid for by Medicare, that would be sent to my mailbox, and then they asked me for additional personal information, which I did not reveal, I recognized at the time that it was that way. Each person that called me, to include, and Joe Richardson called me today and told me the same thing had happened to him, and the same thing had happened to Dwight Severs, when I mentioned it at, at the hospital meeting, it has happened to numerous people. Now, I immediately reported it to John Lau for investigation. Now, you know, I could have, if I was sick or in bed or something, I could have succumbed to that, now, I'm not sure what the packet for a saliva test that is being paid for by Medicare, so it's Medicare fraud, and just, I'm just putting this out here, that, just be careful, be careful on the calls you get, even though it may seem official. I redialed the call, and the call went straight to my doctor's office, so what they had done was, they had cloned my doctor's telephone number, so the call did not come from my doctor's office. Okay, second thing I have is, I was wondering, when we do manpower studies, do we bring in like, an industrial engineer to do our manpower studies? I guess my concern is, do we have enough people in each area to work proficiently? And how do we perform our manpower studies within the city for our slots?
Wow, that's an interesting question. You know, we do.
I'm an interesting person.
Our internal staffing studies, we don't bring in a consultant to do any staffing, we do comparables, you know, performance measurement, and, but we don't bring in a consultant, you know, we basically put our heads together and brainstorm, and figure out how to get the mission done, and what resources we need, and what personnel we need to do that.
Okay. You know, and I'm sure you did it when you were in the Coast Guard, we did it a lot in the military.
Like for fire, you know, obviously, they have staffing standards, and, you know, and same thing for public works.
Well, I'm kind, yeah, I'm kind of talking about places like, you know, Brad's area, and.
Well, they have performance metrics, you know, how many, like, for each inspector, how many inspections per day, and then times the number of inspections that they have, and that, but we don't want to overstaff.
Okay.
You know, if you have a surge, you don't want to bring on people permanently, you would then use, you know, part-time or other resources, you know, you want to keep the full-time equivalents down, if possible.
All right, okay, thank you.
Member Nelson?
I'm gonna be long-winded. First, I want to say, thank you, Mayor, for your interview with Channel Two, it was great on the Space Center and the problems. Second thing is, apparently, St. Teresa's is having a problem selling Christmas trees on their lot, you know how they always sell the Christmas trees on the back of the church? Apparently, it's not zoned for seasonal sales, so, talking to Brad, I think we need to change the ordinance, and allow for seasonal sales, at least by nonprofits, that was, looking at the ordinance, that was the easiest way to handle it, I think. Right, wrong?
Yeah, the location criteria is very specific, so it sounds like, based on the conversation I had with you, that maybe we want to expand the areas where seasonal sales can occur.
Right.
And with, if we do get advisability from council, we can certainly look into that.
Because, think about it, you have the Methodist Church on Highway fifty, selling pumpkins, the one on Dairy, selling pumpkins.
Don't forget about the Girl Scout cookies.
Yeah. Girl Scout cookies, what else?
So you're saying all of those have been just operating illegally?
Basically, it's kind of like some of our other laws that we're trying to go through. City attorney, we had some discussion about this, can you weigh in on a way we could temporarily address this until we get an opportunity to fix it?
Yes, I was actually already working on a memo to send out, having discussed this earlier in the week, because I do think there are some problems with the way that seasonal special event definite, some of the definitions, because, as you all know, when, when we as government do things, we have to be very content neutral, and yet, that definition only applies to five very specific holidays, it says Valentine's Day, Fourth of July, Halloween, Thanksgiving, and Christmas, doesn't include Memorial Day, Labor Day, New Year's Day, Juneteenth, you know, Hanukkah, anything else, and that's a problem in and of itself, so my recommendation, and I'll put this in writing, will be that we suspend enforcement of that until such time that that staff can, can bring an amendment to council to consider that would cure some of those First Amendment concerns.
Thank you. I think that works. Do I need a motion for that?
I don't think so, he's already working on drafting it.
Yeah, you're drafting it.
I would need some direction to go forward with reviewing this, because it'd certainly require an ordinance to make these amendments that are code.
Right, and that's, yeah, I mean, that's the step right now, to suspend enforcement of the current ordinance, how we want that new ordinance, I mean, if, you know, staff's gonna need some direction, because there's a variety of ways we could do it, you know, including whether we want to regulate these seasonal events at all, all the way down to how specific we want to get, I mean, there's a wide range there.
So my thought would be, the first, first thing we do is suspend the ordinance, or the enforcement.
Let me just ask, suspending the definition, because right now, all seasonal sales, regardless of type, are relegated to this shoreline mixed-use zoning, community commercial zoning, regional commercial zoning, and the M1 zoning, period, no other zoning is allowed, so if a church or any other organization or commercial property is in a different zoning district, they are not permitted to have a seasonal sale of any type.
But, but, my recommendation is that we don't enforce that seasonal sale concept at all, because that's what's problematic, is that we call it seasonal sales, but we limit it to just five different holidays, and we're not any broader than that, so.
That could open up to other single-family homes, too, to have other events, and other zoning, residential zoning districts, then potentially.
I mean, suspending an ordinance isn't ideal, because it does kind of throw, throw everything out, but, but our, you know, I mean, we have to, we have to pick and choose, I don't know if it's a real big problem of having special events in, in single-family areas or not, but.
Well, I mean, they have like, you know, people do stuff at their homes, I mean, code enforcement doesn't have time to police all 25,000 rooftops while they're doing a seasonal sale out front, so I don't think the number's gonna skyrocket overnight.
So I would think that, based on what Jim says in that memo, that it will give us some ideas on how to make it work.
Yeah, and I can cover Brad's concern about the zoning in that memo.
Okay. City attorney, can you share with council, one of the recommendations you mentioned to me about how you would draft such an ordinance?
Well, when it comes to special events, because of the fact that the city's decisions all have to be content neutral, special events create a very specific problem there, because people are coming for special events or parades and things, and if the city's granting some and denying some, it's very easy to slide into that content-based decisions, like, okay, we like this parade, because it's Fourth of July, very patriotic, dah dah dah, but we don't like this parade, because, you know, maybe it's a pride parade, and we don't want that, you know, and those type of things, whatever they are, so, a lot of cities have gone to a system where a person will submit a notice of a special event with some specific outlines, how many people do you expect to have, what resources are you gonna have, where's it gonna be located and things, and it, what it does is, it puts the city on notice, so that we know this group is expecting 500 people out in this area, maybe we need additional law enforcement resources out there, maybe we need to have, you know, whatever, and, so it's a matter of, do we want to approve the special events, or do we want to just know about them, so that we can be ready to respond if necessary?
Well, part of it is that, when somebody asks for a special event, it gives us the ability to say, how many officers do we need, are we closing roads, and these people are getting charged for it. So, it's not the citizens paying, it's the organizers paying.
And those kind of things, we could accommodate, you know, if we're not granting or denying because of what the event is, but because of public safety concerns.
Right.
You know, police, whether public works, whether roads need to be closed off, whether traffic control is required, whether porta-potties are gonna be required, and those type of things, because none of those things touch on the content of the event, it, you know, touches on public safety issues.
So is this something that we would address at the next meeting?
This would be a very large comprehensive rewrite of special events in general, so that would take a while.
You have, we have advisability from you right now, to come back to you with changes to the special event ordinance itself.
Okay.
This section we're talking about is about seasonal sales specifically.
That's my question.
Which is a little different, so I would ask if I could get direction from you, if you want us to make changes to this, that we could, we could go back and clean this up, that part, and include it in the special event ordinance, so it's a comprehensive rewrite, if that's what you like.
So, the advisability would be for you to go back and look at seasonal sales, and make some changes?
Yes.
And you already have the advisability for special events?
Correct.
Right.
And so, it doesn't matter to me if they're together or separate, I mean, they're, you know, they're a little, they're a little separate, so it makes sense for the advisabilities to be separate, so, but I have a motion from Member Nelson to give advisability to Mr. Parrish to look at the seasonal sales.
Second.
The motion, I have a second, any further discussion? I'm gonna, hold on, let me get to you, anybody else from council? I see lights on, Member Stokoe, did you want to say something?
I just, I, we'll probably wait until we discuss it more, I think I was just wanting clarification on, I felt like we were talking about two separate things as well, special events, because now I'm just thinking, so when all these churches do their harvest festivals and trunk retreats, are those considered special events, are they acting right now in non-compliance?
Depends, so special event is generally three types, sometimes they're gonna have them on a private piece of property, and we, based on what's given to us, if it doesn't require resources or any kind of need from us, or, we may respond back to them, we don't see a need for your, for your request, we don't, we don't need, see a need to issue you a permit, thank you for telling us, but there may be some other events that they are providing, submitting to us, might be on that property, that same property, but now it's much bigger, we can see there's gonna be an impact, because a huge amount of people are gonna be coming to this property, we can see that there's a potential we need to go in there, maybe speak with them about how we're gonna work on the traffic circulation, or they need to provide some additional parking temporary, whatever that might be, then, we would need to issue them a special event permit, and generally, right now, a special event permit ordinance doesn't specify type of event, I mean, it's pretty, it's pretty good on that, but, associated with that, you have mobile vendors that come in, right, so some, and they have to get a BTR, separate BTR just for that, so for example, you've got a parade, or you've got some kind of, a circus, or whatever that might be, then you, they bring in food trucks, or they bring in other vendors that want to sell merchandise, they, the city requires a BTR for that, if they're gonna set up a place that is gonna be for extended period of time, much longer than what a special event permit would allow, because it's generally about three, four days maximum for that event, if they want to do something 45 days, like during. If they wanna do something forty-five days, like during Christmas, then there's a separate process here. There's a, they have to get, this is the se- the section of the code we're talking about right now.
Okay.
And so right now, the, what we're concerned about is the definition of what that is, because it only clarifies specific holidays as ca- as seasonal. Um, and, and then it specifies which particular zoning districts those are only permitted on.
And then I know some churches, like even for their Sunday morning, I think they pay for an officer to help direct traffic.
If necessary. Yes, sometimes they may not ask for it. We look at it and say, you need something.
Okay.
We can't, we're not sure this is gonna, we can permit this because of the nuisance issue potentially.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking, just of the churches I know, I feel like some of them, they are grand events that they might need some additional paperwork. And then some of them are relatively small that I would say, I don't feel like you guys need to really do anything. Like that's, like, you guys are kind of having a party among your members and.
We, we have a, a planning meeting, but when it comes to special event permits, we, we look at the application case by case basis. And nine times out of ten, we actually ask, we'd like to have a meeting with you so we know specifically what you're trying to do. Because a lot of times, especially people, uh, churches or other, um, property owners or applicants that are, um, doing this for the first time in the city, don't know.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the specifics, what they need from us. And so through that planning meeting with us, then they find out, well, you're gonna need a fire inspection for the, the food trucks you're bringing out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Uh, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Parrish, but, um, every event that's happening at a business that's operating outside of their normal business would require a special event permit?
There was a question about, um, a few months ago about car shows. And having, you're using up the entire parking lot for your business for this special event and doing it monthly. And so there was a question that came to staff, how can we permit these? Because I, I, I believe there was a case where one was, um, denied. And then I think the reason is because the parking lot, for example, was approved of that site plan to accommodate the business. Well, they're gonna keep the business open, but they're not gonna use the parking lot. What are they doing for the patrons? So that potentially requires some kind of special event permit to accommodate that potential temporary impact. Then there's some parts of the code that say, depending on which zoning district you're in, you're only allowed to limit it to maybe four times a year. That's something we are considering. That's something, uh, to expand, and we're bringing it back to you. In the downtown, you can do that twelve times a year. Each time, it's an event. It can be one day, it can be up to four days. But then it has to be a break after that before we can count the next per- event. That's the way the code currently is written. So it's case by case basis, really depending on location and scale.
All right. Sorry, Ms. Parrish, but I'm pretty sure the code says that if you're doing something outside of your normal course of business, you have to do a special event permit.
If the impact is not, as, going back to my first statement about, sometimes we look at this and say, we just don't believe you, we need to issue a permit to you, because the scale of what, of the event that you're submitting to us, or that you're proposing, is not gonna impact the approved function of the site plan.
Okay.
Then we'll, we'll reply back and tell you, we do not believe we need to issue a permit for you.
So did we issue a special event permit last year for, uh, downtown realtor to ma- name, remain nameless to do a trunk or treat?
I have to look back to see what we did, but I know that there was an event that was proposed, um, in Julia Street parking lot.
So, you know, it's, he runs.
Which is public property, which require a permit.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying on public property, but, you know, on private property, if I was having an event inside my office, a trunk or treat, the public's welcome. My understanding of the code is that would require a special event permit.
I, private property, um, if they are doing on private property and not just, uh, creating a nuisance, we may make the judgment call that that is not required a permit in that case.
But a judgment call, not what the code says, correct?
Well, the code is, is intended to issue, require a permit because of the scale and the potential impact on the surround, on that property surrounding areas.
I understand, but my concern is with judgment calls to, um, Mr. Stokes's point, because then we're deciding, or we're, could be the appearance that we're deciding what events are allowed to take place and what events are not allowed to take place.
The, the flip side of that is that you probably have to require a permit for every birthday party that might happen in their location. So I think th- the code that I believe was written with the intent to allow staff, the events coordinator, which is, uh, a specific title in the code, to make that judgment based on that scale and the information that's provided to us. And that's a collective decision based on the police department, fire department, community development, public works, and engineer.
We have an events coordinator?
The code requires a special events coordinator. And last year, in order to clean up the process, because it was a little cumbersome and kind of wa- um, wasn't really coordi- uh, centralized, we, uh, promoted a, an internal staff member uh, to handle the coordination of all events. So anytime we get an application, it's filtered through this one particular person, and she provides the information to all the reviewers and coordinates the meetings, the planning meetings with the applicant and the reviewers.
So if I was throwing an event, how many different reviewers would look at my application?
So depending on the application, generally, full, uh, pretty, uh, parade, for example, will include public works, the city's engineer, uh, planning, um, the police department, and the fire department.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all my questions. All right. Um, so can you remind me of the motion, Member Nelson? I'm sorry.
Advisability for Brad to look at, um, seasonal sales and come back with some changes to broaden, well, basically to keep people legal.
Yes. Thank you, Member Nelson. I have another vice medical second.
Is that a good way to put it?
Anybody?
That helps, that helps us.
One way.
We'll base it on a discussion.
Mr. Johnson?
My name is, my name is Stan Johnson, and I'm opposed to a number of things you're doing. And I oppose what you're doing today, which includes many things in which you've insulted me, you've disrespected me, you've violated the Constitution, you've continued.
Mr. Johnson, I'm gonna caution you, you're not on topic to the motion on the table.
The topic is, is, is that I'm opposed to what you're doing in this particular matter. And I'm going to continue to oppose many of your matters because of your corruption and dysfunction of the government.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. You can take your seat.
No, no, I'm, I'm.
I've cautioned you once.
Is that I sent you, I sent you emails today about this.
I'm asking you to take your seat.
I sent you emails.
Mr. Johnson.
And you have, and you haven't responded.
Don't make me ask you to leave.
September the twenty-third.
Mr. Johnson.
Two emails, I just sent you. I don't want you to respond to them.
Mr. Johnson, please sit down.
That's not right. That's not right what you're doing.
Mr. Johnson.
And you should be, you should be protecting me.
Mr. Johnson.
You people should be protecting me because he's lying.
I'm now asking you to leave the council chambers.
He's removing me when I'm trying to speak.
Please leave the council chambers. Please leave the council chambers.
I don't enjoy what you're doing. I'm, I'm gonna sit down under duress.
Do you want me to ask the officer to ask you, to escort you out? Officer, please escort him out. I asked you to leave the council chambers after I asked you to sit down repeatedly. Please. All right. I have a motion on the table. Any further council discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Member Nelson, do you have other things?
Yeah, sorry.
No, I just made a point, it was a lot, but there was a lot of good discussion we had, so.
Well, this is interesting. So I need consent for staff time, specifically, I think, Sandy Reller. Um, I got a proposal from Ms. Thompson about nano bubbles. Nano bubbles.
The presentation we had?
The presentation. She wants to pay to, for a trial in, um, the Marina. She is paying for it, not us. Uh.
Sandy?
No, Laura Lee. Laura Lee's paying for it. Sandy will be having a heart attack. Um, I tried to talk her out of it, but she is adamant that she wants to pay for this trial. Um, so our cost would be some staff time, i.e. Sandy, uh, getting their permit to do it. And, um, meeting about it. Anything else?
That, that's basically it. Yeah, she would absorb the hundred fifty thousand dollar cost for a, a limited, um,
I tried to talk.
Pilot program in a, in a confined basin in the, by the Marina, actually over toward Westland Marine, not actually in our slips, in Westland Marine. And, um, again, our, our staff time and pulling the permits is the extent of our city's, uh, responsibility.
Can I just have an informational only questions? I know, uh, when I had conversations with, uh, Laura Lee about this, she was very, very big on, um, you know, around Scobie Park. So I was just wondering, again, it's her money, I don't care where she puts it. Uh, but I was just wondering why she, uh, wanted the Marina versus like Scobie Park and that little inlet there?
She said, she and Chris went through it, and this was a location they thought was appropriate. Um, there is a lot of muck in Marina. Um, I'm very well acquainted with the Marina. Um, and yeah, there's muck there.
Yeah. Again, wasn't debating and arguing where it should be, just wanted to wonder why, you know, the change, but I appreciate that information.
So, um, I was sort of hoping she'd wait until they did the experiment on Miami River. But she doesn't wanna wait. So that's my request.
Yeah. I, I second. Can I ask a question? Would it be appropriate if we are invited to go see, for us to go out there? Um, because this project could be something we eventually vote on.
Oh, absolutely. I think that's the whole purpose is to demonstrate that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that if Jolynn's out there, if I show up.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think we all want to show up.
Yeah, I, I want to.
I don't have the exact parameters of the experiment, the duration and all that, but this just started to evolve this week. As a matter of fact, she's asking me to call her tomorrow if, if council discusses this.
It's evolved this week. Today's Tuesday.
I know.
But I love it, and that's the, the kind of tenacity that you have in the private sector that just wants to get things done. And I applaud her for, uh, not only her volunteerism and dedication to our community, but also putting her money where her mouth is. And, uh, uh, that is, um, definitely commendable. So I can't say enough, uh, nice things. But I, I do believe, uh, Member Nelson made the motion, Vice Mayor Cole seconded. Member Stokel?
Member Moscoso seconded.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, and I do have, just to clarify, staff does want to do this, and they, there's no like unintended consequences or anything, or things that we should be aware of before saying yes. Because it seems too good to be true, so I just wanna make sure.
I mean, I think staff is very interested to see if their proof of concept works.
Okay. Okay, no, I'm.
Techno, I mean, Laura Lee is convinced that it's really emerging technology and.
Yeah, if there's no potential harm, and I'm.
Yeah, I mean, our, our, our exposure is very limited as far as the city.
Okay.
Laura Lee's taking the brunt of the fiscal responsibility.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, definitely in favor.
And in terms of conversations, uh, I know she's told me she's had with a lot of the environmentalists around the county, uh, Dwayne DeFreeze seems like, you know, he's on, in favor of trying it, you know, he's according to the exact quote, out of the hundred-plus snake oil salesmen that have come knocking on his door with the bullet point solution to, you know, silver bullet to fix the ligand, he's like, this one's the most promising. So that is what she told me, he said to her. So I, I think we gotta kind of take that for what it is as we move forward. So, uh, would, anybody would like to speak on this topic? All right, I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
No, one more. No more? Well, we said that we were going to support the mayor's ball. So my thought is it would be good if we had some guidelines on what that meant. Uh, we've supported N double A C P before by buying tickets for everybody to go. Um, but beyond that, do we need some rules for what we're going to, what we're not going to do? Because when we get to the five oh one C three, I think we're gonna have some rules. So I think that's Jim's question.
I mean.
I'm assuming the foundations have some rules about guidelines.
I mean, the rules would be the, the basic rules that, that you would already, you know, your decision should be non discriminatory and should be, you know, for, for charitable, because it'd be set up as a, as a charitable organization, a nonprofit organization, so, so the cause would have to be. But beyond that, as long as you have a majority of council that's, that's identifying a particular nonprofit or whatever. Uh, but then as far as what resources are being put into it, again, that would, that would fall within your discretion as, as the council or the board if we get a five oh one.
I was sort of interested in what the other cities did.
Uh, we could certainly look into that and, and kind of get some best practices.
I would appreciate it.
Yeah. Remembering that once, you know, and, and this is the way it is generally. If you vote as, as the elected body to run the city, you vote that, that there's a valid public purpose for an expenditure of funds, that is the kind of thing that the court is rarely ever gonna overturn. They're not gonna supplant their judgment for yours. They're gonna figure you five have been elected by the citizens of Titusville to be the stewards for the city. And so if, if a majority of you decide this is gonna be a good use of funds, um, for something, then that's pretty much all that it takes, so. But, and then beyond that, it falls to, to you. And, and, and things like the ethics code, you know, you can't.
Yeah.
You know, remodel your own house or things like that, but, yeah.
Drat. So what do you guys think about support being, uh, the city provides tickets for us to go? I mean, we did it for the N double A C P.
I mean, I could ask the Air Command to comp us tickets. I mean, I don't think that's out of the realm of possibility. I mean.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, I was just going to say, I think for the purposes of this particular event, I think once we get the five oh one C three, I think we'll have different rules because that will be, we'll have money in that pot. But for these purposes, I think, um, I would say limiting it to, just like we did with the N double A C T P, N double A C P. If we wanted to purchase like a table for us. Um, and then I know that we had said, um, there was some minimal cost with paper and envelopes. Um, but beyond that, like, I think if there's staff time over two hours, that would come before us. I don't anticipate that happening. Um, but I wouldn't really wanna do anything beyond that. I think it's more of just a, we're supporting it, we're behind the idea. Um, but not really diving into much of the financial portions of it beyond that, was my thought.
So did you guys wanna sponsor? Did you guys wanna do a table or a sponsorship, or however you wanted to do it? Uh, it doesn't matter to me.
I think for the N double A C P, the city paid for tickets.
We got a table for, I think, yeah, for us, um, there.
Yeah.
So if you guys wanna go, I'm fine with that.
I think I get in for free, but, you know.
Okay.
That's because.
Yep.
But, yeah, um, whatever you guys wanna do, just let me know, and, or let the city manager know, and, um, we can get that taken care of, so.
I mean, I guess we could say, rather than a table, if, because I'm already seeing a head shake, maybe just, if you want to go, the city will fund us as council members if we wanna go, and then if not, versus maybe a table.
Yeah. That'd probably be the more cost-effective option.
I think it would be too, because I'm at the parish table, so I don't need
Okay.
a ticket, so that means that cuts it down.
Maybe. Okay, so maybe I'll just make a motion that if a council member wishes to go, that the city will com- like pay for that ticket. And that's the extent of our cost.
Second.
I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion from council? Anybody?
I wanna know why I, as a taxpayer, am gonna pay for you to go to a hundred and fifty dollar a ticket ball that I don't particularly want to go to, don't move in the social set that goes to it. I don't want my taxpaying dollars to go to that. I think it's ridiculous. You wanna go to this ball that the mayor is putting on, pay for your ticket yourself. Is it gonna be just you, or you plus one?
It would just be, uh, that my motion was just for us, kind of similar like we did for the N double A C P.
And yet this man doesn't need a ticket. He's, he's part of another board that is going to support this event. I, I think it's enough for the city, the city's mayor to be making videos and posting on Facebook and social media saying, oh, this is the mayor's ball, the mayor's ball. Let the mayor buy you a ticket, not me, the taxpayer.
Yeah, I think that could open up a whole bunch of can of worms of then we're not supporting any event in the city. So I prefer to. supporting any event in the city, so I prefer to support my community one step at a time, but I appreciate all the feedback. I have a motion, I have a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That any council member wishing to go, the city would purchase a ticket for them.
Oh, yep.
All right, all, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries four to one. City Clerk, did you reflect though, correct? Thank you. I just wanted to make sure you were good before we moved on. Anything else, Member Nelson?
I'm done.
All right. So, Member Nelson went, Member, or sorry, Vice Mayor Cole went. Member Muscoso, would you like to go?
Yeah, I'll pass.
All right. Members, Muscoso's yielding her time, Member Stokel?
I'll, no, I'll be really quick, and I, well, thankfully for you, I didn't even bring my notebook, so I did have a Florida League of Cities, several meetings this past week, and just a couple highlights I wanted to say. One, it was interesting to see health insurance costs going up across the state, so as we were hit bad, it was, I don't want to say it was nice to hear, but apparently that's been the trend. It was also interesting to hear some of the stuff with the prescriptions, that part of the cost going up, we're saying that there's a lot of new patents out for some prescriptions, and I was like, oh, that's interesting to see, yeah. And then, there's going to be a new AI hub on the Florida League of Cities website, so I'm excited to see more of that. I already have some ideas for some things that they can do, so I'll keep you guys, I'll give you guys updates as I see more about that. The other thing, and this is probably more for staff, the grants department within the Florida League of Cities, now they have a specialized designated person on contract to provide help. So if you want them to review your application, if you want some ideas for different types of grants, they said please utilize them. It is a wealth of knowledge, just the things that they were going over, I was like, oh, our staff would love this. If you have questions, they have somebody dedicated specifically to help us throughout the process. And then lastly, the policy committee meetings are starting on Friday, so I think our mayor got appointed to one of those, so there's five different policy committee meetings. It's important to realize, me being on the board for the Florida League of Cities, we do not set the legislative priorities, our policy committees do that. So we have five different ones, they meet three times throughout the fall to kind of discuss what are we facing as local municipalities, what are the top issues we want to advocate for at the state level? So, those are starting on Friday, so that will be really exciting to see kind of what comes of that, and so with that, I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Member Stokel. City Manager?
So, I have two action items on the city manager report. First is, it's customary for city council to cancel the second scheduled meeting, meetings on the fourth Tuesday in December, and request council act as to whether or not they want to cancel those two meetings.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Is, is that a motion?
I have a motion by Member Nelson, I have a second by Member Stokel. Any further discussion? Anybody want to weigh in? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you.
Attached in the city manager's agenda item is the FY26 legislative priorities that we discussed at the last meeting. We added the Senate Bill 180 concerns, and the rest are just, you know, overarching macro-type issues that every year come before the legislature, and just looking for approval so I can transmit that to Space Coast League of Cities, and they consolidate it into an entire platform for the Space Coast.
Thank you very much, City Manager. My small take on this is, while the widening of State 405 is very, very important to us as a city, in terms of a legislative priority, I don't think it's gonna get a whole lot of traction. What I would suggest is the legislative priority of supporting and funding the Infrastructure Transportation Trust Fund, because that is where these pockets of money come from. I believe last year, they actually took some money out of it to balance their budget, and given the fact that Brabark County alone has a $2.1 billion shortfall in terms of roads versus funding over the next twenty years, that is kind of critical, so, while, again, very, very big on my personal priority list is this widening, I think our specific ask should be more policy-related, because I believe the way the state legislature looks at it is, that's just one road here, but again, tying it into the bigger policy of how they balance the budget and where that funding is coming from.
I, I can certainly add that, and...
That was going to be my recommendation, can we just add it? Because what will happen is with the Space Coast, we'll have it there for us to go and talk about when we go up there, but the Space Coast won't talk specifically about this, but we can definitely bring up the, making sure to fund the trust. That would be my recommendation.
Thank you, Member Stokel, Member Muscoso?
Yeah, one of the things I, I think could possibly, we could also include is, I have, I have it titled as Financial Stability and Tax Policy, because we know that, you know, there's a good chance property taxes are going to be eliminated, and so I, I'm just gonna read kind of what I, what I wrote and just see if this is something that tracks with you guys, but it says, "The city supports measures to maintain strong fiscal health and protect the delivery of essential services while minimizing the local taxpayer burden. The city encourages expansion of targeted revenue tools such as impact fees, so development pays its own ways, and existing taxpayers are not overburdened. Any statewide tax reform should ensure cities have stable means to meet community means." Needs, sorry. So it's not a, it's not like a, a big punch, but it's just saying, hey, remember, this is...
You can send me that verbiage.
Yeah, and so just kind of a reminder is, we still have to function as a city, and...
Yeah, that's actually perfect, because I had on my list, can we say something about property taxes?
Yeah.
And there, that's perfect.
Okay, I'll send that to you.
I'm pretty sure that's gonna be on everybody's list.
Yeah, and I, I don't want it to be, not be on our list, so...
It can be special in that way.
Yeah.
Member Nelson?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
That was on my list, too. But the other thing on restoration of the lagoon is saying, we urge the legislator to, legislature, to continue funding dredging efforts. Since we're doing a demo project, which isn't dredging, maybe we should just say, continue funding efforts to remove muck.
Yeah.
Remove the dredging part in the second paragraph. Right. In the second paragraph where it says, we urge the legislator to continue funding dredging efforts, just take out the drun, the dredging.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we're all good with that. All right, City Manager?
The last item is just...
Member Stokel, did you?
Do we need a motion and vote on this?
I mean, I don't know.
I, I can add those additions and just...
If you're good without a vote, I'm fine, I just want to make sure.
We'll meet again, and I, I will send it out to all council, once I get the additions, and if you have individually, you can respond back to me.
Thank you. City Manager?
Last is a copy of the FAA letter regarding the Starship Heavy EIS concerns that we sent out, and as you know, they've, they've extended the comment period to the twenty-ninth, I believe.
Based on your request, we just drafted this letter to FAA, and we tried to address some of the concerns that were brought up related to public access, recreation, and we added an additional statement in there about environmental disruption.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Mr. Stokes?
I only have about twelve items. No, no, I'm sorry, I've got nothing.
Well, we appreciate all that you do, and that is not me being facetious, you know, you've been a, a big help, so with that being said, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.